Good evening, it is now 7:00 PM. It is Tuesday, May 18th, and welcome everybody to our East Point City Council meeting. We always start our meeting with invocation, which is we pray to God, and that is how we got so much done the last couple of years and got us through COVID, and we followed that with the pleasure of allegiance. And who always does that is our Mayor Pro Tem, Senator Lucido. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Dear God, we thank you for all of the blessings and gifts you have given us. It is your, it is good to recognize how different we are, our talents, our dreams, our backgrounds, our occupations. No one is exactly like anyone else. Even our thumbprint and our voice track tell us how unique we are. Yet we thank you that we can take these differences and utilize them for the good of our community. In our differences, we can think the same thoughts and move together towards the same common goal. We thank you for our individuality and also for our common bond that works towards the betterment of the city of East Point. It is in your name we pray, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of West Virginia. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, who was a part of the prayer and also the pleasure of allegiance. We are going into our roll call.
Evening.
Good evening.
Councilmember Curly.
Here in East Point.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Here in East Point, Michigan.
Councilmember Lucido.
Here, East Point.
Councilmember Moore.
Here in East Point.
Mayor Owens.
Here at East Point. Thank you, Ms. Walton. We have the approval of the agenda, would anyone like to add or subtract anything from the agenda? I know I had two things I wanted to add before we get into our conversation, because I know these people probably have to leave. We have, we have some things on the agenda as far as like East Point Level Up. And we have someone that's going to talk about that. Her name is Ms. Answer from Pregnancy Aid, right here in the city of East Point, Nancy Answer. And then a young lady who was going to speak on the event for Juneteenth here at East Point, Akila Bonner. But I believe she did a introduction or more information on that with a video. Ms. Doom, did you receive that video?
I did, and I did forward it to all of council, so that council could also see it.
Okay, was we going to show that tonight or talk about, because I think she wanted to talk about it and why she wanted to bring it to East Point.
I will check if Mariah is able to pull that up for us.
I can work on that, give me one second. Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
There's one item I would like to add to the agenda, and it's the sale of 16279 Samurai.
Yeah, I'd support that.
I have a question. Both and supported, please call the roll those changes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. We're going to open to.
Oh, ahead, one more item too, though, I'd like to also discuss a special meeting about Nine Mile and a potential social district. We could just talk about maybe setting a date to do a special meeting, potentially.
Can we add, okay, any more items we want to add?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, that, we're going into hearing of the public, ma'am. When I, when I open it up, then you can speak. Oh, sorry, okay. Okay, with that additional change, where Kyle from D'Amico? We have motion and support, call the roll, please.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Okay, before we open up the hearing of the public, I want Ms. Answer from the East Point Pregnancy Aid. Good evening, to talk about the grant that me and you have been working on along, along with other nonprofits, to bring East Point Level Up to the city of East Point, and what is that about? So, good evening, Ms. Nancy Antler.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. We at Pregnancy Detroit just moved into East Point in October, and the mayor called us and said, there's a grant, would you like to partner? And before I knew what it was, I said, yes, we're very excited. We purchased the building on the corner of Universal and Eight Mile, and we want to be a part of, you know, the positivity in the community and to grow it in a good way. So, I knew it was good, and as I learned more about it, she and I worked on it. And the thought is to, it's a small grant to help cities with health disparities, especially related to children and families. So, Pregnancy Aid is a nonprofit, it's been around for forty-six, forty-seven years, and we help pregnant ladies, especially ladies who struggle with their pregnancies and their babies. So, we have maternity clothes, baby clothes, a lot of material aid, formula, emergency situations, we try to help in that way. So, health is a big deal. We want to be a part of that. So, we work together to come up with ideas, and the thought was that we could do a community health fair, which isn't really new necessarily, but the difference is we kind of labeled that Level Up East Point, which is kind of, it's an imperative, like you should do it, but it's also an invitation. It's, yes, we need to be healthy, especially post-COVID, as we're creeping toward that, with mental health, physical health, community, all of those things have taken a hit. So, we want to be a part of the leveling up, whatever it is, health-wise, mental, physical, in families and communities, we just want to work it up a little bit, and we need everybody to do that. So, Pregnancy Aid wants to do its part. We have material aid that we could give out to the community with this grant. It would certainly help, but of course, you can't do that without everybody. So, it's kind of a, you know, a big invitation for everyone else to help one another in East Point, too. So, the, the thought is we would do this event in a park setting or outside, and have it catered with healthy food that is from East Point, have vendors that are from East Point, have tables, have prizes, have giveaways, and have places like DJ music, dancing, just happy energy and ability to communicate and get together as a community and meet new people. They could see what's around and, and feel bolstered by that. And hopefully mentally and physically and in society feel like we can, you know, work together toward a better lifestyle, which is sorely needed. So, that's the goal, and that's the hope that everybody has a way to participate, even if they want to be a speaker, or they want to sponsor someone, or bring in something that would help young people and families. That's the goal of it.
Thank you. So, well, thank you, Ms. Answer, a little bit about the grant. I have been getting, I get a lot of grants sent to me, and this one was called the Mayor's Innovation Grant, and how to help your community with health disparities. And so, what better person to help me write this grant is someone that deals with different things as far as children and mothers and things like that. And in the past, I went to Pregnancy Aid, so it just made sense to me. You know, they helped me with my baby clothes, and I had twins at the time, and I was a young mom, and, you know, I wasn't ready for kids at the time, and God gave me two, so thank God for that, by the way. And it was just a lot going on, and they were able to help me, and, you know, when my kids got done with their clothes and, you know, their, their car seats and things like that, I gave it back to Pregnancy Aid. I've always been like that in the, in the community. So, we worked together, and the grant is $10,000, and hopefully we find out if we get this grant by Friday, and what she and me was coming together is asking to be a city event that we do it at a park, and the city sponsors it, so covers the fee on that and the table chairs and get, you know, the music as far as the speakers from the recreation department. So, it's stuff that we already own and things like that. So, the $10,000 pretty much covers the food for the community, and the speakers or the DJ, we're just asking for the space. Isn't that correct, Ms. Answer?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. So, council, councilman, yes, sir.
Just had to point information. You, you had this event on the agenda already.
Yeah, but I wanted to, but she has to go, and I want you guys to talk to her before she left and get to meet her and what she does in the community. So, that's why I want to hurry up and put it on there, so once we get to it, you guys can, you know, she won't be here later on. So, you can ask her questions while she's here before she leaves, and you can talk to me after if that's how you feel. But if you want to ask her questions about it, or you don't have any questions, then just want her to say, you know, a presentation about us working together.
Sure. Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
The, the only thing that I would ask is to have like an event application turned in before moving forward, just so all the departments can look over it to make sure we all know what we need to make a successful event, because I personally wouldn't be able to make that decision without the information from our PSDPW and Building Department, so on, on what they, what it would be, what we would need, and what the cost would be.
Right, I agree. It was just a discussion because we didn't get the grant on Friday. We didn't get it approved yet. So, we just, you know, discussing it, if, you know, we're allowed to get that grant, you know, I was just letting you guys know. I think I talked about it last meeting, so I just want you guys to know the process, where is it going, and that we'll know on Friday. And so, once we know, we know the date, so we didn't want to set a date on something we wasn't sure on, so. But, um, any other questions for her before she leaves, anyone? Okay, well, you're all dumb, Ms. Answer, and thank you for what you do in the community. And again, anybody out there that has, you need baby clothes or anything, or just want to volunteer or Pregnancy Aid, she's right there on Eight Mile. And you have a number of contact, Ms. Answer?
Yes, I do. I can put it in the chat.
Okay, thank you for doing that, and thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, thank you for inviting me.
Yes, ma'am. Um, Ms. Doom, I think, who am I talking to, Ms., for the Ms. Bonner? Was the video, or we just want to do it when, you want to try to get it up later on?
I have it up now.
You have it up now?
Yep, I can try to share my screen and see if that works. Give me one second.
Okay, thank you.
There, you also had that, that's also on the agenda.
You guys want to wait for that, then? For the video?
I, I would prefer until we got to the agenda item.
Okay, so I want to get the presentations out the way, and then we just go to the discussion, but that's fine. Ms. Walton, thank you. So, let's open up the hearing of the public. I know a lot of people have some eager things to say, comments, ideas, and the hearing of the public is three minutes. You get an additional three minutes close to the end of the meeting. We ask you to be respectful of your words, because we have all type of people listening from different backgrounds and different ages, and to be respectful. Now, the hearing of the public is now open, and I will let you know when to go, so you can get your full three minutes. And we ask you to say your name and residency. One second. Okay, the hearing of the public is now open.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Ms. Montgomery, how are you?
I'm great. Okay, I'm here because my son is a resident of East Point. It was supposed to be an issue about his home on Stevens. And that's, I'm here on his behalf because he's in the hospital. There's supposed to be a bunch of notices sent about his home, and then they were talking about demolishing the home, and.
Oh, excuse me, one second, ma'am. You were talking about the, the show cause hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we canceled that. We're going to reschedule that, right, Ms. Doom? I don't want you to stay.
Oh, because, yeah, the letter, the letter has stated for six o'clock, so I didn't know anything about that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was, I thought the same thing, so please don't apologize. That's, that's our fault. We apologize on that. So, we'll give you that information. Ms. Doom, then we, what was the date for that again?
Get out, ma'am.
I, I believe our attorney is going to request another date this evening.
He's going to request another date this evening, Ms. Montgomery, so we'll let you know further information on your son. Your son will definitely get a letter on that, a new letter on that. I can't hear you.
Where can I call to find out when the court date is? Is somewhere I can call tomorrow, maybe, or?
City of East Point.
City of East Point?
Yes, you can call Ms. Doom, call the city manager's office, and she can let you know.
Is it Ms. Doom?
Yes, it's Doom, D-O-O-M, Ms. Doom, that's, yeah, the city manager's office.
Okay.
Well, you can email us as well. Go to our website, and you can see the emails of each councilperson and our city manager and other staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. You don't have to leave now, if you don't want to.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, Erin Geiger would like to speak next.
Hi, good evening.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. One of the agenda items that will be up for consideration as new business is Item K, which is the adoption of Resolution 211928 dealing with medical marijuana. And I am an attorney. I have been practicing law for thirty-three years, and I had the opportunity to look at your scoring evaluation process. These would be my observations. Your Items Four, Six, and Seven all favor residential priorities. In other words, consideration is given if you are either a residential owner, if you are going to hire residential people to work in your establishments, et cetera. And I want to caution against doing that, not so much because, well, the, the simple reality is unfortunately lawsuits are, and it, it a product of our industry. And there have been lawsuits already filed in the city of Detroit, and there have been lawsuits filed with the city of Highland Park, both dealing with the concept of residential favoritism. And in both cases, we have Wayne County Circuit Court judges who have imposed injunctions, stopping the process because that violates the Commerce Clause. That's point number one. Excuse me. Point number two is you're dealing or you give credibility or points to vacant properties. And just as an observation, because I know this has happened, when East Point decided to explore the concept of opening an ordinance, people were gobbling up commercial properties, tying them up with long-term contracts, with the idea saying, well, they're vacant, and so they're.
One second.
They will get consideration. And so, the benchmark for vacancy needs to be at least seven years. Finally, you're giving consideration to Brown's Field Developments. And again, if the concept is to get rid of your contaminated properties, then consideration needs to be given more so than just burying it alongside of upgrades and renovations.
The time is up, sir. Thank you. You have another three minutes at the end, if you want to stay.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Al Anderson would like to speak next.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. I, I am an attorney representing the homeowner at 18103 Lister. I'm here for a show cause hearing also. Is that, has this one been adjourned for this one as well?
Yes, all the show cause hearings that everyone has showed up, tonight's meeting has been canceled. You call the city manager's office tomorrow, and we will have the new date for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, Ms. Trice would like to speak next.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Um, Ms. Trice from East Point. I just wanted to ask a question about the Pregnancy Aid program. Isn't that something like the Gianna House that would be offered to the pregnant women? I mean, because I take all my baby stuff there and donate it on a monthly basis. And that was my first question. My second question was the GFL. I had a problem, and I had to email Ms. Doom, and she turned it over to Ms. Apling. And now I have two recycle cans instead of one, that they need to pick up one of them out of my yard. I don't want to get in trouble, but, um, they changed them from red to green. They were dropping them, the whole can in the back of the garbage truck. We watched them do it. So, are they charging the city to switch these cans over or replace these cans? When actually the driver is the one that's dumping the whole can, and you got to wait two weeks to get a new can? I mean, it's a waste of of time to keep emailing Ms. Doom, and I'm sure she has better things to do than to worry about a garbage can. I mean, what is the situation with GFL, and are they reconsidering their contract? Um, are they recharging us to get more cans for what these drivers are doing? They're destroying the streets when they dump the cans. You got to go out there and you got to clean up behind them, because they're not smashing the stuff down properly. And that's it. I just wanted a couple answers to my questions if I could this evening.
Hey, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, Jason Vereen would like to speak next.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Owens, and members of the city council, and everyone else attending this meeting. My name is Jason Vereen. I am currently a business owner in the city of East Point, and myself and my partner Kenneth Williams, who is also attending this meeting. We are looking forward to bringing another business to the city of East Point, and we want to bring something special here. We have been feeding the city of East Point for, well, we actually fed the city of East Point for one year. We were in a lot located on Eight Mile and Grasshut near the beauty supply. Um, now we have currently moved into a facility at 21,000 Grasshut, which used to be the Sugar and Spice Donut Shop. Sadly, they were ready to move on, so they did, and we are now occupying this space. We are working diligently with the building department and other city officials to try to get this endeavor off the ground. We are looking forward to bringing something very, very special to the city of East Point. We are looking forward to seeing all of you out here and throughout the city of East Point. As new business owners, we'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to, um, to have our business here in this great city, and hopefully we can do something wonderful here and help to continue the betterment of.
You know, they speak to get, you know.
That's all. Thank you.
All right, about that interruption.
That's okay. Thank you for your time, Mayor Owens.
Can everybody please put their phones on silent and vibrate, and respect others while they're speaking, please, as we respect you. Mr. Vereen, thank you for bringing your business here at East Point. You say you were on the corner, correct, at first?
Yes, we were in the lot of, with the Supercell Beauty Supply, right by the Burger King at Eight and Grasshut.
Okay, that's awesome. So, you was in the lot, and now you're in the building.
Absolutely.
You see what East Point does?
Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. This city has been wonderful to us, and hopefully we can return the favor.
Yes, sir. You didn't tell us what the name of your business was.
Um, the name of our business is Big Ken's Barbecue. We also own the Cash Advance that's in that plaza. It's Cash and a Cash Advance. It's right in the plaza next to the Supercell Beauty Supply.
Okay, great. Yeah, we have two businesses from you. Thank you for investing in our city.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, we are, everyone that's listening in, we hope to support you and see you create another business here in the city of East Point, whatever we can do. Our building officials listening in and the council, we do whatever we can to support you, because you support us. Okay, thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor Owens.
Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
Mayor, I do not see any additional hands raised, and there's nothing in the chat at this time.
Okay, sounds good.
Mayor, if I may, just a quick comment, a quick, quick comment.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Jason, I actually came up there to sell my smoothies a few years ago, when you, well, when you were up there, I came and met you.
Yes, you did. I remember you. I was looking at your picture on the East Point site, and I'm like, I know her. You were, uh, you were in the mall at the time, no ice, right?
Yep.
I remember. I remember. I'm looking forward to meeting with you again, Sylvia. Please come by and see us. If you see anyone at the building, or if you see us anywhere throughout the city, please approach.
Okay, yes. You're welcome. Amazing.
John Turner actually does have his hand raised and would like to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Turner. How are you?
Good evening. Just wanted to introduce myself, Madam Mayor and City Council. I am Wayne County Sheriff John Turner, newly resident to the city. Just wanted to introduce myself to the committee there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Elder Turner. And, uh, well, I used to be a Wayne County Sheriff, so I'm excited. We got another one right here in the city of East Point. So, thank you for protecting and serving us. We can't wait till you retire from there and come work for the city of East Point, but I'm just putting that out there. But, yeah, so thank you for coming. Is this, this is your first council meeting here, and how long you been living here?
Yes, ma'am, since October.
Okay. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
This is awesome. We got new people moving in and new businesses, so I'm excited about that. Anyone else?
No, Mayor, I don't see any other hands raised, and there's nothing in the chat at this time.
Okay, moving right along to approval of the minutes.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would move that we approve the minutes of, of the regular meeting of May 4th, 2021.
Support that. And Mr. Curly, if I can make a one minor amendment, just note that in the minutes that I did not sign the National Day of Prayer proclamation, just want that noted, since I said that at the last meeting.
I would, I would still make a motion with that, with that amendment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motionist, motion and support, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
We have a scheduled hearing tonight for Drinking Water Revolving Fund Project Plan. Schedule hearing is now open. Do we have anyone from AEW? Hi, Mr. Curran, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor, council. How you doing tonight? Um, I'm going to start, start off with giving a brief presentation. The Michigan Department of Environment, Gravely, and Energy, known as EGO now, requires a brief presentation of the proposed project before we open it up to public comment, so I think Mariah was going to pull up the short presentation here that I have. It should only take a couple of minutes to go through. All right. So, this is for the Drinking Water Revolving Fund Loan Project Plan submittal. And our office has assisted with the city of East Point with preparing a project plan for water infrastructure improvements to apply for Drinking Water Revolving Fund Loan. Uh, we finished the draft project plan here in April. Uh, we finished the draft project plan here in April and we put that out to, uh, public viewing on April fifteenth. Uh, requires a thirty-day comment period prior to this public hearing. It was available at City Hall. Uh, it was also available in other locations throughout the city. Uh, it was also, a public notice was also published in the, uh, local newspaper as well. Uh, the Drinking Water Revolving Fund Loan, it's offered through the Michigan Department of Energy, Great Lakes and Energy. There's two different, uh, revolving fund loans. There's the Drinking Water Loan and then there's the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan, which has to do with sewers. For this coming year, it appears that three hundred and eighty-seven million dollars is gonna be available uh, for approval for loans for all communities throughout the state of Michigan. It's a low-interest twenty-year loan. It's typically about two to two and a half percent interest. Uh, for this current fiscal year, it's down to one point eight seven five percent, which is the lowest I've seen it in the past. But typically, it's about two to two and a half percent. That changes annually. Communities are required to present a project plan to EGO for their review uh, prior to, um, basically applying for, being approved and apply for a loan. Uh, project plans are typically, uh, requested once per year, usually by May first of each year. However, this year, they've extended that deadline to July first due to the Michigan Clean Water Plan that the state introduced late last year, which has several grant opportunities for communities, uh, for both water and sewer improvements. Some of those grant programs haven't been, um, formally introduced yet. There's still some grant opportunities that may arise here within the next few months, particularly on the sewer side. But there is a Drinking Water Infrastructure Grant Program that if you apply for a Drinking Water Revolving Fund Loan Program, there's the potential of getting up to two million dollars in grant funding as part of the, uh, loan that you might receive. Uh, there's thirty-five million dollars available in that grant program, available to all communities within the state. Once we submit a project plan, those projects are ranked and they're placed into a project priority list. They're ranked based on, uh, upgrades for compliance, enforcement actions that may be against the city. Um, if you're improving the reliability of the system, it's based on the population of the city. And if they're a disadvantaged community, which we determined that East Point is not a disadvantaged community, but if disadvantaged communities get extra points in that ranking. There's a hundred and four miles of water main, six through twenty-four inch diameter throughout the city system. Uh, the system was installed mostly between the nineteen twenties and nineteen fifties. However, there have been several water mains replaced in more recent years. Useful design life of a water main ranges from fifty to a hundred years. And in addition, uh, in two thousand eighteen, the state, um, set out new rules in regards to lead and copper for lead water service replacements that require communities to now replace lead waters, known lead water services from the water main to at least eighteen inches inside the home. Um, as part of water main replacement projects, we have been complying with that and replacing those water services. Uh, there, it's recommended to replace at least five percent of those known water services within the next twenty years, starting in this current, uh, fiscal year. And I will say that East Point has been proactive and that is probably ahead of the game compared to other communities. And we have, after this year, we will have replaced several of those water services. We had one thousand three hundred and thirty-three to start. And by the end of this year, we should be down to one thousand eighty-five. And if, uh, we get approved for a loan program, this program would account for at least another four hundred replacements. And part of the problem with the current system is that it's aging and that we do have frequent water main breaks. We'll go on to the next slide. The proposed project that we're looking at is a twenty million dollar project for infrastructure replacements throughout the city, primarily along Grasshut. We would be looking at replacing the water mains, both on north and southbound Grasshut. Uh, the section on northbound Grasshut from Eight Mile to Topher was recently replaced. We would be looking at the remainder of Grasshut, as well as various residential streets that are some of the oldest water mains in the city. Uh, they have frequent water main breaks and they're not to current standards. And then again, in addition, we would be replacing lead water services as well as part of the project. And we did look at several different alternatives based on the project plan that we have to present. We did have to look at a few different alternatives of how we're going to replace the water mains. One of those options is, um, to study no action, whether we take no action and do not do any replacements and what the effect would be on the system. The other, uh, alternatives that we looked at were the different types of installation, whether it be open cut excavation, directional drilling or pipe bursting of water main. Um, the most cost-effective and easiest to construct is gonna be open cut excavation and that's what we're proposing. The schedule for the loan application, um, obviously, tonight, we're having the public hearing and the final project plan is due by July first. A pro draft project priority list would be established sometime in August with a final project priority plan issued in October of this year. At that point, we would know if we're funded or not, or if we're approved to move forward with a loan application. Um, if we do not, based on how many projects are submitted, if there's not enough funds to cover all those projects and we don't meet the threshold to be approved, we would continue, we would stay on that list and be considered the following year. And we'll just continue on the list until we're in the fundable range. If we are approved to move forward, the loan application process would take place through the winter and be approved in February of twenty-two and the approval would take place in April twenty-two. So we would be looking at starting construction sometime in two thousand twenty-two and probably looking at about a four-year project to complete this. Impacts of the project. Obviously, there's gonna be some temporary inconvenience to the residents and businesses. Noise, there's gonna be dust, there'll be road and lane closures and detours and we'll be notifying the public as much as possible prior to start, to the start of any projects. And the long-term impacts are gonna be improvements to the quality of the water distribution system. Obviously, there'll be improved reliability of the aging infrastructure and removal of lead components in compliance with the current rules. And with that, um, I'll allow the mayor to open it up to any public comment.
Madam Mayor, but you're muted.
Thank you for telling me that. I was just having a ball. Thank you, Mr. Curran, AEW, for all the work you've been doing for the last couple of years. And I thought you were listening to me. You were not. You're here like you heard me everything I said, Mr. Curran. So I thought I was on the ball. But, um, first, I would like to ask council, you have any questions? Um, do we have anybody from the public that has any questions about this?
Someone put in the chat, how do they choose which residence pipes get changed?
I know that's based upon, uh, we did a ranking a few years ago and we did a citywide water asset management plan. And we ranked all the water mains within the city based upon the age, the number of water main breaks. If the water main is in current compliance, there's several water mains that are six inches in diameter and current regulation requires it to be a minimum of eight inches. Um, so those are the, those were the main, uh, criteria points that we looked at as far as choosing which pipes would be considered. And obviously, we're gonna be looking at replacing those that are the oldest and they have the most frequent water main breaks.
Thank you. That was a good question. Anybody else have any questions?
Okay. Anything else in the chat? And there are no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Scheduled hearing is now closed. I think we go, when we get to new business, we adopt, correct? Um, Ms. Doom?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, my report is brief. We've been pretty busy, especially with the warm weather.
That was a question. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Closing hearing of the public and then we, uh, we adopted a new business, correct?
Okay.
Is that correct? I'm asking you a question.
Uh, yes.
Okay. I know you're trying to speed up and go home. I know.
I am home.
And go to, okay, yeah, and go to sleep right at home. Uh, we have no unfinished business and we're gonna go straight to reports from, uh, city administration with our city manager, Ms. Doom.
All right, we'll try this one more time. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, as I started, uh, we've been pretty busy. You know, the weather's warm, people are coming out, they're letting us know about, uh, grass that needs cutting and issues like, you know, recycle bins when you need one and you get two. So just, uh, pretty busy with the day-to-day operations of the city. Now that we've, um, you know, gotten past the section that, uh, we need to discuss about draft budgets, we're now working with our unions very closely as their contracts are expiring June thirtieth. And we are very hopeful that we'll have some new contracts for you to review, um, that we've, uh, you know, negotiated before the, uh, end of June. And that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our city manager, council?
Yes, I have one. And, and it's about the, uh, bins. She wasn't in on my conversation earlier, but I came home and both my bins were gone. I have none now.
Oh, well, we know where they are.
I actually placed the call to City Hall and was like, I have no recycle bin, I have no trash can. They're gone. Yeah, so, yeah, maybe.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
You know, maybe they dumped it in the garbage and kept going.
I don't know, but I see Darren is here and.
Yes.
Would, I would find out, have him pipe in. I've got a message here to pour him for the morning to ask him about who does get charged when, uh, the bins get replaced or if there's, uh, a lost one and it has to be, you know, or you get two of them. Darren, can you kind of join real quick on that one to give us some input?
Sure, I'm right here. So the, the residents do not get charged. If, if it just suddenly disappears, it could be the neighbor taking it. There could be a few reasons. It, it, I don't believe it got dumped into the truck, but, but it could have, but the residents don't get charged, no.
Thank you.
And we keep track of them. We have serial numbers on all the bins.
All right, thank you so much.
Wow, okay. Any other questions? So I know one thing we have to do is get the councilwoman a trash can, right?
Oh, yeah, Darren is working on it. Yeah. He's working on it. One recycle, one green, yeah, one trash.
Yes, make sure you do that. Okay, we have, uh, no more questions for our city manager. Let's go straight to our finance director, Randy Blom. Good evening.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council. Uh, one topic, um, this Friday, the twenty-first, is the cutoff for, uh, keeping delinquent water off taxes. If you pay online, the payment must post by eleven fifty-nine PM on the twenty-first. However, if you come in in person, you can actually pay on Monday, the twenty-fourth, and it will still be considered on time. Um, so those are your two options. Uh, and, uh, basically, anything that's six months or older that is unpaid will be delinquent and roll on to the summer taxes. Uh, and that's all I have.
Hey, any questions for our director of finance, anyone? I say none. Going to our city attorney, Mr. Albright. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, like the city manager and the finance director, I only have one item as well. And that's the, uh, rescheduling of the, uh, show cause hearings, which were initially scheduled for this evening at six o'clock. Um, if the council would like to schedule those for, uh, a Tuesday preceding a council meeting, uh, those could be done at either of the meetings in June or July. Um, and, uh, I will make sure that, uh, again, the, uh, the notices get out uh, to the respective, uh, property owners regarding, uh, notice of, uh, the hearing.
You all want to do the next council meeting, same time?
Sounds good, ma'am.
That's good. Yeah.
So that, that'll be, uh, just for members of the public and anybody else listening, that will be June, June first, uh, two thousand twenty-one at six o'clock.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, that's the only, uh, item again that I have. I'm happy to answer any other questions this evening.
Any questions, council? Saying no, moving right along to new business. Thank you, Mr. Albright.
You're welcome, Madam Mayor.
You're going to our new business. Um, item A, bid award for custodial importer services. Council, any conversation on this?
Sure. Mayor, I've got one item.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just figured for this, this item and just really any of our bids in general, right? We've, we've talked about not always just going with the lowest bidder, uh, depending on, you know, other reasons. And I was looking at the list here and, you know, McCoy Maintenance is in the list. Uh, for an example, they're headquartered in East Point and they've been doing our interim work. Um, as far as I know, uh, we like them. And I think they do a good job, um, as far as I know. So I didn't know if, um, maybe council is interested in doing something like that. Because I also noticed that the two, the two lowest bids, including the one that the, uh, city disqualified, those were a lot lower than like the next set, essentially, like the next four. Um, and, you know, of course, we've had a discussion about lawn maintenance and just figured, um, we know someone's good and they're headquartered in East Point and maybe it made sense to at least consider them. So I didn't know what else, uh, anybody thought.
Cardi, do you have, uh, I don't have them in front of me. Do you have McCoy's bid for the first, second, and third year in front of you?
Yeah, I've got it. Uh, let me rotate it here. It's sideways. Yep, um. So, yeah, they do a hundred twenty thousand three hundred for each year. They don't change the price over the three years. Um, and it comes out to three hundred sixty thousand nine hundred dollars.
So Giant Janitorial Services were the lowest bidder.
Right.
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, it doesn't look like they were the lowest bidder, but I think that, um, part of their bid wasn't in their initial bid. So when you added that in, it made them not the lowest bid. So that's why the city was actually recommending the city building services because theirs was actually lower than Giant when adding the one service in that was excluded from their bid. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
They were the only ones that forgot to put that, the initial bid form in or you know, something like this happened before when somebody forgot to do it. But McCoy is good. They are, uh, located in the city of East Point. And, um, they actually here cleaning out the office tonight and they all, always do a good job. Anybody else have anything to say about this?
Um, Madam Mayor, I was just looking at the, the cost differences.
Okay.
So it's thirty-seven, five, the first year cost difference, thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
Yeah, and like, like I was saying, councilwoman Moore, the, the like next set is a lot closer. You get just under one-ten to one-twenty for like the next. Um, but yes, yeah, what you're saying is definitely the math, what you're saying a moment ago.
Yeah, and so over, overall, the three-year period is a difference of eighty-three thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirty-one. So eighty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars difference between the two over a three-year period.
Uh, yeah, twelve plus. I'm seeing, I guess I'd say seventy-two, right? Three sixty minus two eighty-eight?
Yeah, I pulled up my calculator. Wouldn't even gonna try to do the math in my head unless I'm looking at the wrong. You know what? I am looking at the wrong number. Let me go back. Actually, it's more than that then. You said McCoy?
Less. Well, the top one, well, the top one's disqualified. So it's the two eighty-eight, the city building services.
Got it.
And then, yeah, McCoy, which is the three sixty.
Okay. Well, the whole, uh, reason for us to go out and bid is to get the lowest bidder. So we, if that is what we do and then we don't choose the lowest bidder, what's the point of people going out to bid? You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
To a certain degree, um.
Sure.
Have you ever used city, have you ever used city building services? Anyone know?
I don't know about them.
Okay, so there's.
I don't know if you want me to jump in. Um, I had spoken with, um, city and I don't know. Um, well, initially Giant Janitorial, like, um, councilmember Lucino had mentioned, um, the biohazard services were not included in their bid. So it increased, um, if we just did like an estimate of the usage. So any blood, um, or anything in relate, in relation to the PD, um, anything that they would have to clean up would be considered an incident and would be a hundred dollars, um, each time. If we estimated like ten times a month, it was about twelve thousand dollars additional, which made them no longer the lowest bidder. Um, I did talk to city building services and then also talked to, um, their references. Um, the references have been working with them for a long time. One of the issues, like many other, um, organizations right now that they're having, um, is consistent employment. So people don't show up, things related to COVID. Um, that's one of the issues in terms of hiring, um, that city has had with, with the references. Um, in terms of McCoy, we've been working with McCoy and have had no issues. Um, in terms of service, they've been stellar. Um, we've had phenomenal people here, um, at the, the city hall building. Um, I know George is on and George is incredibly impressed, um, in the court as well. They have McCoy working there, um, and they've been phenomenal in their building, um, know exactly what to do. So we're supportive of McCoy. Um, city building, um, did come to the meeting that, that we had, um, and presented very well. Um, so we're open to, to whatever council decides.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, I mean, it is a lot of, there, it is a, you know, financial difference between the three agencies. But I know in the past, we've had some issues with our cleaning services and the fact that McCoy has been filling in and. filling in and doing like a really fantastic job with providing these services during COVID. Because it has been a difficult time for companies to keep employees and things like that. Really, in my opinion, says a lot about the company. So I think at this point I would be willing to continue using McCoy for the cleaning services for the city because it does seem like they do a really good job.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I I agree with Sarah. We've all known McCoy Maintenance for many, many years and it's an incredible job. The all the employees seem to me that that they have a they have a passion for our city. And they're they're right here in the city on Stevens and they we've used them to clean our carpet and whatever and they do a great job. They really do. I so I would agree with Cardi and Sarah that we would continue to use McCoy.
Ms. Walton, you said if we their blood or hazardous, they charge this extra city does and McCoy doesn't?
No, Giant Janitorial, the lowest bidder, had an additional fee schedule that was not included in the bid, which is why we moved forward with city building services and reviewed them. So that was Giant and we we excluded them as they were no longer the lowest bidder with the additional costs.
So what was the cost difference between, you said, councilwoman Moore, between McCoy?
Oh, uh, between it's seventy two thousand, uh, seven hundred and forty nine.
Over three.
And that's over the three years.
All right, we got the information, counsel. You want to go? I I mean, I'm not, I mean, saving almost eighty thousand dollars. That's that's a lot of money. And also like the fact that we have a company that, you know, works in the city and is local, but at the same time, you know, we have a bid service for we do the bids for a reason.
Be happy to offer a motion there and see how it goes. Your Madam Mayor, I'd like to motion that we award three year contract for custodial importer services to McCoy Maintenance for or out of East Point, Michigan, in the amount of hundred twenty thousand three hundred dollars for year one, hundred twenty thousand three hundred dollars for year two, a hundred twenty thousand three hundred dollars for year three for a grand total three hundred sixty thousand nine hundred dollars. The end.
Good, the end.
I I would, Madam Mayor, I would support that.
Okay, motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeManico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Mayor Owens?
No.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
I just said, I'm gonna explain why I said no, because again, our beer services are here for a reason and we just went up on the residence water and we're spending extra money on other services where we can save money. So that's why I hate to spend more money until the resident, I mean, you know, spend more money where we don't have to and then tell the residents to spend more money on other services. So we're gonna save money. Let's save money all the way around. All right. Let's go to our next item on the agenda. Downtown Development Authority offered to purchase two three zero three five and two three zero three nine Grashit Avenue from the City of East Point. Counsel, conversation on this?
A point of order, Madam, Madam Mayor. It's not it's it's not surprising that I'm confused. The the recommendation, the first motion was turned down, right? And do we not have to go back and award the contract to the low bidder then? We didn't do that.
It passed, Mr. Curly.
It did.
Yeah, three to two, yes.
Yeah, pass, sir.
Oh. But I I told you I was a la la land. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
That's okay.
Mayor, if it'll help, do you want me to say motion passed or motion denied at the end?
No, we have to do that. We haven't been doing it all this time. Unless Mr. Curly think that will be that will be helpful.
No, Madam Mayor, I appreciate that. That was just, it was just me. I I was thinking ahead for item J and K, whatever. I'm sorry.
I know.
I apologize.
I'm with you. I get lost a lot too. It's okay. Thank you, Ms. Walton, for that recommendation. We're back on item B for the Downtown Development Authority offer. Counsel, did you want to have any conversation on this? Okay, no conversation.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It it would be nice every once in a while when we have something like this that who authored this to tell us why they want us to vote on it. Why do we? Why do we want to vote? Yes, maybe the, I don't know, maybe the city manager or somebody. I'd like to at least have an explanation.
Okay, sounds good.
Good evening.
Actually. Oh, I'm Ms. Holman. How are you? Either? Well, I do Miss Holman because she deals with it and what they both do it. But we're gonna do, Ms. Holman first, our Director of Economic Development. Good evening.
Good evening, counsel, mayor and counsel. And yes, I, on behalf of Ms. Doom, the board chair and the rest of the D D A members, I did put together this motion, the D D A board at their last meeting. By the way, we have two new members. We're very excited to be just one shy at this point, but we'll work on that. And one or two may be on tonight. The D D A is making their official offer to purchase the property. The tax reverted property located at two three oh three five and two three oh three nine Grashit from the City of East Point for the costs incurred by the city in the purchase and maintenance of the property. From a review of all the records, it's broken down in the memo, a total of thirty five thousand, thirty five dollars and thirty four cents. The D D A board is still considering different options, whether to renovate and lease the units. Or perhaps there's been a lot of interest. Or perhaps to sell the property at market value and use those proceeds for other projects within the D D A district that could involve the public in a bigger capacity. From the residents to the D D A businesses to city businesses. We're very focused on building on the installation of the D I A Rainbow Makers mural that was installed last summer. Some of the ideas that have been discussed are additional art installations by local artists, supporting some local events, or even some projects that could somehow tie the children's garden, the library, and the school system together. So the D A is requesting the purchase of that property.
Councilwoman Curly?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
You can go first, Curly.
No, I I was gonna do the same thing you did to make the motion, but if you if you want to read that very long recommendation, go ahead.
Okay, I'll be your guest today. All right. I I make a motion that we accept the Downtown Development Authority's offer to purchase the property located at two three zero three five and two three zero three nine Grashit Avenue, East Point, Michigan, with the legal description arraigned subdivision number one, lot seventy five, as recorded in Librum four, page twenty one, and Platte McComb County Records, parcel I D. number zero two dash one four dash three zero dash three seven nine dash zero two nine for approximately thirty five thousand, thirty five dollars and thirty four cents. The total amount the City of East Point has expended in the purchase of the and maintenance of the property to date and to further authorize the city manager to execute the documents necessary for the sale.
The support.
Thank you.
Okay, motion and support. Please call the roll. Councilmember DeManico?
Yeah, before we vote, I I just had one item about this. I'm in favor of doing what we're doing, but I think one thing. So we we bought, well, not bought, we received this property as, you know, tax as a tax reversion property in twenty nineteen. And I guess frankly, I'd like to ask a question, I guess, because I'm not a hundred percent sure at this point either the exact answer. Is I want to make sure that we bring this up to code and follow our tax reversion policy that we've set, you know, in our policy we state. And I'd assume, at least looking at the building, that the property be identified as something that needs minor improvements from our policy, which we should review it and then the the city can either choose to renovate and bring up to current building codes by identifying and receiving council approval of a contract relationship or and then sold on the open market. Or sell as is with the new buyer completing the current or the necessary renovations. I just want to make sure, kind of like we've done with the residential properties, where residential properties, we're renovating it to ensure it happens as opposed to like hoping a developer does. I just want to ensure a certain amount of renovation happens before we sell it just to bring it up to code. So I don't know what what that exactly looks like, but maybe Ms. Holman or Ms. Doom be able to describe that?
Yes, sir. Actually, both Ms. Hardcastle, the building official, has been through the building. And most things are in pretty good shape. HVAC is in good shape. There's some minor repairs to the roof. There are some repairs to the back parking lot, but also Councilmember Moore has been through both of the units as a builder and they they concur that that it is basically up to code. It's going to be mostly well, some small things, cosmetic things, but also things like the meeting ADA requirements for the bathrooms. But the plumbing is there, some minor electrical. It's really a matter of, you know, read, you know, fixing any walls, doing something to the flooring and of course putting in new lighting. And I don't know if they want to add anything else. So so really, it's not as bad as as some of the homes that that we have gotten into inventory. We've also been told by a number of realtors that private investors can get much better pricing than the city can from contractors and that generally, you know, the D D A chooses to go that way. That the private investors would would prefer to do the work themselves because they get a better return on their investment, but we could also put something, you know, perhaps something into a purchase agreement. If that would, you know, if that's something the D D A board would like to consider.
Okay.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
It is definitely known that even if we were to fix up a a build into a certain degree to to sell it, they'd probably go in and gut it and start it from scratch again anyway, because it depends on what they're designing it for. So I did look at the buildings and they are in pretty good shape. I hope that helps.
Yeah, I guess I just, well, and I I guess the reason I bring it up too is in case it doesn't sell right away. I just want to make sure, you know, we have a property that looks nice because if it's, you know, if we received it for foreclosure, you know, it probably hasn't been kept up the best. So I just want to make sure that we're doing what we can now, especially if it doesn't sell right away, making sure it's nice property and then changes hands and continues to be a nice property.
Oh, yeah. They they were actually nice properties. They really were. Better than some of the ones we already own.
So then can we do as Ms. Holman stated, just make sure that those various code violations, then whoever buys it obviously needs to make those updates, you know, as soon as possible and and then whatever renovations they'd like to do.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Okay, I think she jotted that down. Ms. Holman has been doing a really good job and she's been with us. So I think she will do those those things that you require and she's already been doing. We had, do we have a second on that?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you. Motion and second, please call the roll.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeManico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Next item, item C, McComb County Habitat for Humanity home first year two. We have our CEO right here from Habitat for Humanity, Ms. Helen Hicks. Good evening. How are you? Did you want to speak a little bit shortly on this?
Good evening. Hi. Hi there, Mayor.
Hi.
See you. And good, good evening to the city council and also the city employees. Thanks so much for having us here tonight. Erica Bartels, our chief operating officer is here to jump in. But I just want to thank you for the last year. It was, it has been a spectacular year. You know, we started out, we thought we would be helping mostly refugees, but we learned along the way that most of the refugees were not ready to move into homes. They needed two years of employment. So we opened it up to East Point residents. And we've, you know, the stories that of the people's lives that we've touched together as a collaborative project have been extremely meaningful. I I don't know if you guys had a chance to meet Eric, but he bought his first home on Shakespeare. Grandpa helped him a little bit. He didn't think he was ever going to get a home because his income was so low. The our refugee is actually going to be closing in August. That's the gentleman, Patrick, moving into Valley. I know a lot of the city council got to meet him. We've got, you know, a wonderful person moving in on Gaskine. That is an East Point resident who is living in an East Point apartment and, you know, decided that he really wanted a house. So, I mean, those are just three stories of people whose lives have been touched. Again, we're selling all of our houses below market value and we're making a concerted effort to do that. When the appraisal comes in, no matter what the appraisal is, no matter what the bid is, we always go below that. And so it's just really been an amazing, wonderful, wonderful relationship. We're here tonight to talk about six properties coming up that we're hoping to obtain this time with a lot of help from the county, which is really amazing. And but we're just finishing up our eleventh home from last year. And I just want to point out, just throw it out there, that we are going to be opening up a third store. So you guys are talking about some properties and stuff. You got me all excited over here. So that's for another night, but I'm just throwing it out there. At this time, I would like to turn it over to our chief operating officer to talk a little bit more about the funding for the proposed projects. So Erica?
Good evening, everyone. I want to tell you a little bit. We have partnered with the county to use Chodo or federally funded income home dollars. And they're really excited about this opportunity to do the rehabs in East Point. One of the things that they really help us do is bridge the affordability gap between what it costs to rehab a home and what we can put someone into it for. They offer down payment assistance and they are in the process of raising that. Typically, we see between five and ten thousand dollars, but right now they're working on between five and thirty thousand dollars that they award the homeowners who go through our program in down payment assistance. And each one is different based on the circumstances of the actual homeowner, their income, their family size. But they do, you know, that really helps people get that first start. And then if they stay in the home five years, the first five to ten is forgiven. And if they stay ten years, then they forgive the entire down payment assistance, which really helps that family. And it helps them build equity. It also stabilizes the community because the people don't tend to move out. They want that equity. So we're really excited, like I said, and the county is super excited to partner with us. And we have the funds available to go ahead and get the project started. So happy to answer any questions if anyone has them.
Any questions, counsel?
Madam, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. No, I I don't, I don't have any questions. I just have a, if I if I'm allowed, Madam Mayor, to to make a statement. I think all of us have taken the time to go and look at one of the homes or two of the homes that Habitat had been had renovated. They don't, they don't spare anything. It's top notch. It's class one. And we all know the experience they have. I've already probably told you the story. And uh, we all know the experience they have. Um, I've already probably told you the story a hundred times about the experience that I had with Habitat in two thousand and five, a long time ago. But uh, uh, I think we have here seven homes that they are interested in purchasing for the for the amount that we have purchased it for, the maintenance and other expenses that we have used. And I think these seven homes you're going to see when a, if it's approved, that all these seven homes are going to be renovated. And we're going to have some real first-class people moving into our beautiful city. So if it's not out of order, Madam Mayor, I would like to make the motion, put it on the floor, and let's see what happens.
Well, before you do that, I want to ask the council, do they have any questions for Ms. Hicks? Or the, uh, I believe it was that Ms. Bartels first.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have a question, but I just have one other comment also. I do want Habitat, they have been doing a fantastic job in the community with rehabbing these homes and selling them to people. Um, I do really appreciate it. I know you guys do really, really, really good work. Um, I'm, I am going to approve this for this tonight, but I really hope that in the future that when we, you know, receive our next, you know, more tax reversion homes, that maybe we, you know, start to tend to at least follow the tax reversion policy that we put in place on rehabbing some of these homes um in the future, because I would really like to see how that would look if the city actually did go through with initiating that that sort of project ourselves.
Yeah, I agree with you, Ms. Lucino, um, because some of the things in a tax reversion property uh we put together was to uh give uh residents uh and the people who work for a city of East Point first rights to get in these homes. And I really haven't really seen that done, uh, because I personally actually put that in there and I haven't seen that done. But I seen you, Ms. Hicks, actually put forth the effort to offer a couple of homes to uh some of the people that work for the city of East Point. And you just said you had a resident that actually uh already lived here, that actually owns a home now and was a renter at first. So, you know, we want to really uh push that because we have a lot of employees that are looking for homes too. And we want to be a service to them as as well as the residents that already live here. So if we can um go with what we write and follow that, I would be happy with that. But other than that, you do a lot of work in in our city and we want to say thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Councilman Curly.
Yes, ma'am. I would move that we approve the sale of the properties as follows. Two zero eight two five Redmond, fourteen dash thirty-one dash three to eight zero dash zero two seven, twenty thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. One seven three four four Lincoln, fourteen dash thirty-two dash three oh six dash zero zero six, twelve thousand fifty-two dollars. Two two five one six Normandy, fourteen dash thirty-two dash one three zero dash zero one zero, sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Two two zero four six Doward and adjacent lot, fourteen dash thirty-two dash one oh seven dash zero one seven, fourteen dash thirty-two dash one oh seven dash zero one eight, sixteen thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars. Two two zero five four Oakwood, thirteen dash thirty-six dash two three one dash zero zero nine, ten thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. Two two seven eight nine Roxanna, fourteen dash twenty-nine dash four seven six dash zero two five, twenty thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Two one seven four two Boulder, fourteen dash thirty-one dash two five five dash zero zero nine, sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-two to the McComb County Habitat for Humanity to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to this sale.
Good job, Curly. Councilman Curly, you're done for the night. That's it. Drink some water. Yeah. We have a motion and support.
Amen. Yeah, and if if I could just make uh one comment to Mayor.
Sure.
Uh, for for our tax reversion policy, we do talk about, and I I think this is e- exactly the point we were looking for, that we would sell properties with partner organizations. I mean, uh, so Combs County Habitat, I think, was exactly who we had in mind and uh, there were a few others. So I'm uh very appreciative that we do this. And Mr. Curly, I I guess I've got a quick, quick story too. I used to, a long time ago, when I did my lawn business, we used to cut a few of the properties for a couple of years for Habitat and they they were great to work with and, you know, felt good to improve in some of the East Point, uh, you know, properties. Some, of course, were in East Point, but uh, um, so yeah, great organization. Um, so that was all. I'm there.
Good job.
A motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Okay, since everybody have they habitat story. I will admit, I did swing some hammers before habitat. Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Okay, moving right along to.
Thank you. Moving right along to item D, Community Housing Network request for a replacement property.
Council, any discussion on this? If not, let's move right along.
If I may, um, again, talking about partner organizations, um, as you all know, Community Housing Network, and I believe one of their representatives is on the on the meeting. Um, as you know, they're currently building Aaron Park. Um, and we're getting nothing but um positive reviews a- about, you know, not only how everything looks, but how quick they're they're going and um also the quality of the work. Um, this Collinson property isn't pretty bad, isn't very, sorry, it is in really bad shape. I'm not going to lie. Um, if you look through one of the windows into the basement, you can see a couch cushion floating by about foot or two below the window. Um, the basement has been pu- pumped out by DPW a number of times. Um, but because of the fact that CHN is also using the the county home funds, um, it's just, it seems like it's it's just uh, it's just not going to work. So that's why they're requesting um a replacement home. And actually, talking about partnerships, um Habitat for Humanity has offered up one of the properties now approved tonight um so that uh CHN and the county um can can make their project happen, which was very generous on their behalf.
Sounds good. So since they didn't want the house and it's our house, what are your plans to, what to do with it? It is that bad? What's your idea? We just demolish it or?
Um, well, Habitat thinks it can be done. So we are going to ask uh Mr. Palucci's crew, sorry, um, if they would pump it one more time um to let the uh the contractor for Habitat and our new building official in to see the basement. I have to tell you, our new building official is the most positive person I think I've ever met, because she's good to go with five feet of standing water. But we are going to try to do everything we can to save the cost of demolition.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions, council? Okay, let's move right along.
I recommend a motion to approve um a replacement property for Community Housing Network uh in place of a property located at uh one six eight two six uh collision uh with the final request for approval and the determination of purchase price to be uh scheduled for a future city council meeting.
Support that. And Mayor, I think you were saying about someone uh talking about the property here. I think Mr. Felton from Community Housing Networks here. I see him hiding behind the mute button, I think. You wanted to get him to introduce himself. Oh, I see unmuted.
Hi, Mr. Felton. How are you? Good to see you again. Last time I seen you was was at the uh project.
It was.
Over there, yeah.
Groundbreaking. Uh, Councilman DeMarco, great to see you again. Uh, the rest of the council, city staff. Thank you very much for your support. This was um a part of a four-home um project. All tax reverted properties. Two of them are underway as of this week on renovation, eventually be sold to low-moderate income, likely first-time home buyers, which is very, you know, very uh things that we believe in. The third one bids are probably going to be, the bids probably going to be released this week. And we just had the problem with this one home. And it was likely to cost substantially more than it was for for the budget we had with McComb County. Just it it just didn't work. And um Ellen, you are a wonderful human being. Uh, that is going to help us a great deal. I know you and I have met before. We've talked a few times and thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Anybody have, you sound like me. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Felton? Thank you for what you do.
Oh, you're.
As well.
So welcome. And we appreciate all of you in East Point. You you're great partners.
That they have great partnerships with with you, our community housing. I was just talking about you and Habitat at a um at a meeting I had and the things that you do for our city. So you might have another partnership too that can actually help you guys with funding to do what you need to do. So.
So much. We appreciate.
Absolutely. Okay, I believe we had a motion and it was seconded. You guys um call the roll, please.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes, I want to make a correction. It's one six eight two six Collison. Sorry. Uh, yes.
Councilmember DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes, thank you for attending as well. Item E, approval to authorize the city manager to enter into a interlocal agreement for information technology services between Oakland County and the city of East Point. Ms. Doom, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Well, each year Oakland County requests that the council authorizes the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement for information technology services between the county and the city of East Point. So this is a yearly um request that needs to be approved by council.
Mayor, I guess just one very quick question.
Right, might be the same question I have.
It's just, we're we're um, it's just an agreement for any services we already have with them, like Clemis or things like that, right? Um, we're not signing on at this very moment to any other.
No.
Services. Okay.
Okay, now my question was going to be, why is it between Oakland County and not McComb?
It's a good question. I don't have the answer to it. I understand it's been going on like this for many years. And that uh all the counties, most of the counties work together. So this is the part uh where Oakland County will work with McComb County.
Okay, okay. I just want to know.
I think Mr.
McComb County on there.
Oh, Mayor, I I I think I might know the answer. Maybe Mr. Rohib does. I think uh it was a Yes. homegrown application uh built out Oakland County. Now that other uh folks use, right? I think Mr. Rohib. At least Clemis, I think.
Yes, Clemis is hosted through Oakland County.
Okay.
And all the Oakland County communities have Clemis in the majority of McComb County, but the host is in Oakland County. That's why.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right, council.
Mayor, I'll motion we authorize the city manager to enter into an an interlocal agreement on behalf of the city of East Point, a public body, and hereby accept and bind the public body the terms and conditions of the agreement for IT services uh between Oakland County and the city of East Point.
Support. Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Next item is item S, appointment of a rare board member to replace current East Point council appointee Dan Hogan. And this was brought up, and you see, requested by councilwoman Lucina to add to the agenda, councilwoman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So uh Mr. Hogan um has resigned from the rare board, which leaves a vacant seat that needs to be filled by council. Um, about uh two months ago, I believe it was, Rare did um some interviews for their fifth vacancy. Um, Ms. Brown was one of them that applied at that time um to fill that vacancy. And she was not chosen, and I was a little disappointed because I thought she did a fantastic job, and I think she'd be a huge asset to the rare board. So I come before you today to uh seek approval to appoint uh Angela Brown to the rare board with a term that will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Um, I had saw this and I was thinking about, I had a young lady who actually um does a lot with the recreation department already and has knowledge of what's going on. Her name is Ms. Pearson. She's uh also a resident here at East Point. And she, I think, I don't know when she, I think she applied before uh Ms. Brown. She applied in uh, she applied in twenty twenty and I asked her, did she, was she still interested? And she said she was. So that was just because she doesn't, she says she's uh was a former board member and have knowledge of elections, and this young lady has knowledge of actual parks and recreation. And also has been a sponsor to services and their free events for the city of East Point as well with her own company. So do we have other applications, other applicants other than Ms. Brown that we have in front of us? Because I know I sent, um, I asked for everyone that had uh applied for our positions to be um addressed, if you want to call them or interview them, so everybody can have a fair chance, and we choose upon that.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so yes, I mean, I I did review all the applications that were submitted before choosing Ms. Brown. Um, I'm not saying that I did not review the other applications, but I do still think that Ms. Brown would be an asset to the rare board. So my recommendation here today, and I and I may not get support, is to appoint Ms. Brown to the rare board. Um, I, there was no other applications in the agenda that any other names were put forward for this meeting. Um, and I know from reviewing the applications that that Ms. Brown is who I was referring. And I don't believe any other council member had put one in the agenda, so.
Before it came up, when agendas are made, we don't know half the time what's in the agenda. So I didn't even know this was an agenda until I saw it. And then that's why I asked to look at a review of all those that applied within the last couple of months to make sure that they get fair chance to get um recognition or for us to see if they still was, you know, interested. Did you get that information? Did you get that for, for Ms. Walton, did you get that information to all the council or just me?
Yes, the email that was sent um was sent to all of council.
So with everybody for the last year that applied, so everybody got it, not just me.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I did review, I did receive that email. I did re- review those applications. I'm I'm, yeah, I did definitely review those applications.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I I I am satisfied with the due diligence that Sarah performed in choosing Ms. Brown. So I would support her motion to work Ms. Brown to that position.
Okay. Any other council members look through all the the people that wanted to apply for commissions? And call them. Usually we call them and see if they still interested and see their background and see what they did for the community before we choose them. So I guess we're not doing that anymore.
Uh, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman DeMarco.
Uh, yeah, so I, yeah, I talked to Ms. Brown before uh this meeting. She's been on the assessment board review before and uh yeah, I think she'd do very nice. Also, I did call her and I I review all the applications the city administration gives them to us each week. So all the ones that were sent out in the email we're referring to right now, I've I've already reviewed them before. May not have called every single person that we've uh received, but I think I've talked to anyone that's applied for the rare board potentially. But I mean, we, of course, get a a lot of them, but, you know, I I look at them as we get them.
You said you didn't see the one for the rare board?
Well, I'm saying.
Are we, I'm sorry not to interrupt. Now the assessment board review, I thought we were missing some people already. I thought we were short. We're not short.
Well, I think we we used to have two boards for that and we went down to one board. I don't know if we, I I think we need to frankly review all of these uh board and commission.
I thought I said the paperwork you sent me said we were missing three, Ms. Walton. Because I think you sent me a piece of paper that showed me how many we needed that were missing on each board. And I review all the applicants and selected which ones that count with council approval, of course, which would fit. which would fit those needs based upon their experience and what they done in a community.
I'm going to review right now. I know I have vacancies and the expiring appointments. I just want to make sure that I have them all correct.
In front of me, Ms. Walton didn't have any openings on that page for the assessment board review.
Oh, yeah, she wrote down.
There was one. So the board, the board.
Sure, one alternate. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's one alternate that could be appointed if someone is not available that is already appointed on the board. They would utilize.
I'm sorry, can we just move forward with discussing the rare board seat right now instead of discussing other boards and commissions?
Because it has something to do with it though.
That discussion is already on the agenda, but.
But that's not where we're going. You're not this is you're not following along. You're trying to get your vote done. So let me do this.
On the floor, so.
Correct. Okay, I get that. Now, the point of the matter is is that you picked Ms. Brown and she was on the the assessment board. And so why would you put her somewhere else when she can stay there and we need her there?
I I pick Ms. Brown. Madam Mayor, I picked Ms. Brown not because she was on the assessment board. I picked Ms. Brown because I believe that she is a qualified applicant to sit on the rare board and that she would be an asset to that board. That's why I picked Ms. Brown.
I didn't say that. Listen to what I'm saying because you're getting kind of on leveling up East Point right now. What what I'm saying is if you have a board member that wants to stay on that board and we have a vacancy, why are you moving her to another seat? We could keep her where she's at and put someone else where they want. We can use somebody else that never was used and want to be used. That's all I'm saying. If you understand what I'm saying. Do you get that?
I applied to be on the assessment board review. She applied to be on rare.
Okay. I just thought she would like to stay where she was already at. That's all.
Yeah, no, point of information sheet was on the assessment board review is what I was saying. She's not currently years ago was a member of the assessment board review.
Right, and I was saying if she was already had the experience on that board and we have a vacancy on that board, why wouldn't we put her somewhere where she has experience?
Well.
When we have an opening, that's why we should have called her and asked her. When we already have people that are asking to be on on a board and we have other people that have experience, let's use those people when it's already vacant. That's all I was saying. I think I think it's going over everybody's head. I'm not trying to do that, but it's really just let's go straight to we have motion and support. Let's go ahead with that. So then move right along.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
No.
Mayor Owens.
No.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Next is adoption of resolution number. Before I do that, welcome Ms. Brown to the rare board. Next item is G. Adoption of Resolution Number 21-1924 M dot contract number 21-5131 for a signal modernization improvements along nine mile road and 10 mile road. Counsel, any conversation on this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to possibly, if it's possible, the city administration thinks it's okay to table this until our special meeting that we are hoping to have that's going to be coming up discussing a date in the agenda, if we can move this item to that to the special meeting. I don't know what Ms. Doom's opinion if there is a time crunch on this or if we would be able to wait a few weeks to be able.
Yeah, I'm I'm not certain on that. I'm hoping that Ryan Kern is still on with us. If not, Darren, if you could speak to a timeline on this.
Yeah, he's on here. Hi, Mr. Kern. Welcome back.
Yes, there is a timeframe on it. I believe I want to say it's 35 days that the city has to return that agreement around. I'd have to check and see if that is the correct. I know there is a timeframe on it and it's a pretty short timeframe. I can look that up here and I can get back with you on that in a couple of minutes here.
Since he says they have the answer right now, you guys want to move right along till he does or?
Yeah, we can move to the next item if you'd like, Madam Mayor.
Okay, sounds good and we'll be you'll be right back with this. Adam H. Adoption of Resolution Number 21-1925 M dot contract number 21-5055 for improvements along Topher Drive. Counsel.
Sheriff Mayor, I'll have a question. Well, I guess if I could just ask my question, we we had this on our last agenda. Why is this on the agenda again? It's my my question. We 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 approved the Topher work. At the last meeting, the materials provided were slightly different, but if we could, can someone answer that?
I'm Ms. Doom.
Yes, again, Mr. Kern is the best person to respond on this one. So.
When this was presented at the last council meeting, there was the resolution to it was not included with that and we found out afterwards that a formal resolution did need to go along with that. So that that's basically what we're presenting to you tonight is just that formal resolution.
Okay, all right. With that, then I'll motion that we adopt Resolution 21-1925 approving M dot contract number 21-5055 for the improvement work along Topher Drive as outlined in the M dot contract.
Support. Motion and support. A conversation. Move right along. Can you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is the adoption of Resolution Number 21-1926, the drinking water revolving fund project plan.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I will motion to adopt Resolution Number 21-1926, which approves the city's submittal of the drinking water revolving fund loan program occupation to the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy.
Support that. And if I could, Mayor, I had a very quick question about that. I know you're so surprised. Um, we talked, yeah, so Mr. Kern, I know we have you doing like five things at once right now. Um, or, you know, this might be Mr. Paoloucci too. We said we have 1,333 lead pipes left. I thought that recently we said 1313 and then I thought we had done a project or two since then. So I I thought we were lower, but are we saying we're saying right now we have 1,333 that are known is what we're saying?
That's what it started at as of the change in the rules in 2018. Since then, we've replaced I think it was 49 lead water services on a Donald project last year. We had a couple miscellaneous ones in the city that we've replaced. And then with the projects that we have going on this year will be almost another 200 that we'll be replacing. So at the end of this construction season, we'll be at 1,085 left to replace.
Okay, and that's a number then. I think you stated that earlier then. Okay, now I now I follow. And then one other question was there was like on page 16 about the water mains. It says they'll be either made of like ductile iron pipe. It says like either that, but then there's no ore. Like what what are the water mains?
There are other materials that are used, whether it be PVC pipe, polyethylene pipe. We would be looking at ductile iron pipe as installation. That's what we've been installing on our water main projects. That's that's the most durable and that's that will continue with that.
And safe.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then just one quick comment. I see that there was a table that's got our our congressman is Sandy Levin. I just want to update that to Andy Levin.
Yeah, hopefully we'll do that. Thanks.
All right, that's all, Mayor.
Okay, we have motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Item J is adoption of Resolution Number 21-1927, the LGBTQ Pride Month, June 2021. This was brought up by Councilwoman Lucido. You have the floor, Ms. Lucido.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So yes, I'm asking for city council to adopt the resolution. Number 21-1927 for LGBTQ Pride Month of June 2021. And I believe that we have a representative, Ms. Dybolt, from the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission meeting on here. And I would love to invite her to read the resolution.
Okay.
Oh. A point of order before we read it, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. I was right over this thing and I noticed there is a typographical error where it says Pride Month began June of 1969. It should read Pride Month began June of 1970 because the Stonewall uprising was in June of 1969. So the Pride Month started a year after the uprising, so that should read 1970, not 1969.
Thank you for that update.
Well, I'm.
Yeah. Good evening, Ms. Dybalt, please.
Whereas the city of East Point cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom. And whereas all all are welcome in the city of East Point to live, work, play, and every family in any shape deserves a place to call home where they are safe, happy and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas the city of East Point denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas Pride Month began in June of 1970 on the one year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City after LGBTQ plus and allied friends rose up and fought against the constant police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas the city of East Point appreciates appreciates the cultural, civic and economic contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus LGBTQ plus community where which strengthen our social welfare. And whereas it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity and expression feel valued, safe, empowered, supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas despite being marginalized, the LGBTQ plus people continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance and love. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the city council declare the month of June 2021 as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of East Point and urge residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ plus community and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty and justice.
Good job.
Thank you, Ms. Dybalt. Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 21-1927 to declare June 2020 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month.
Support.
Motion and support. Call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
I'm saying.
Mayor Owens.
No.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Moving right along to K. Adoption of Resolution Number 21-1928, a resolution by city council approving a medical marijuana facilities permit application and evaluation point system policy. All right, here we go. Counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll start this off. I guess I could ask this question of the city attorney, but I'm going to ask that this part be removed. It's under five. Item B and it reads as follow follows. A total number of years that a property or site to be renovated by the applicant has been vacant. It sounds to me like that's pretty much what one of our people spoke to that we were giving where it seems like we're giving credit to someone who has been able to keep a a building vacant for however how long and that we would we would award them points for having a vacant building excluding somebody that has a building that's now opened, but they want to change venues or change occupation. So I would I would like to see that item B or line B removed from our resolution.
Mayor, I would also like to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
I also agree with councilmen that B should be stricken from the resolution because it's definitely given preference to people who have been having a property and holding on to it and giving them extra points for doing so.
I think even even if we take it out something, if a business has been in East Point and they're still going ongoing as a business because a lot of businesses here sold their property and it's been vacant all these years, you know, but a business that is still sitting and still running as a business and didn't leave our city a ghost town and then is about to renovate should get points for that. You know, so that's why in the past, even though I'm not for it coming to our city, I wanted to do business owners having first right and as well as residents. And I don't even I don't know if I see that in this in here either. Mr. Albright, but yeah, I I agree with Councilman Curly and Councilwoman that no one should get points for leaving our city a ghost town. But I do think people who are continuously having a business here and has sustained that business even during COVID and still here should get points for still, you know, bringing business and investing in the city and then and then getting renovations to, you know, change it to a medical marijuana facility.
Um, anybody else? Yeah, Madam Mayor, you you know, that I concur because if a person already has a business open and they're here and they decide that they want to continue to be here and it's an incentive to keep them, that yeah, they should get some points and some wording should be in here based on that fact.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
My biggest concern with that, like the attorney that spoke at the hearing of the public said this is going to put us into litigation and I'd rather not try to avoid litigation at all possible all possible costs. I don't know what Mr. Albright's opinion is on that. But I don't think that we should be limiting or giving extra points because someone's already here. We really need to focus on getting the most qualified applicants and the most qualified people running these businesses in the city and welcome, you know, all of them to apply to make sure that, you know, East Point gets the best.
Right, or we can just get rid of it altogether. But again, I don't think you know, I do appreciate people want to come and bring their business to East Point. Let's get that clear. But also people understand that, you know, me being an ex-police officer and community leader now, certain things I I just feel like it doesn't fit East Point. We're a family town, so I want to keep it that way. But also marijuana does provide some health benefits as well and I also understand that. But to have it to buy a building and have it sit for three years and three or four years and not do nothing with it. I feel like you shouldn't get points for that, you know. Unless and if we're going to do that, you need to point it, you know, do bullet points on, you know, if you're going to be, you know, five years, five points. I mean, what does that look like? But I don't think you should get points for leaving the city a ghost town. But I appreciate you paying the taxes for the city, but other than that, yes, counsel.
No, I totally agree with you. I think a lot of investors who want to invest in these businesses. We started discussing this three years ago. They came along, they bought a building and maybe it's been sitting a vacant. So yeah, I definitely don't. I definitely agree with you there. We should not be giving them points for leaving these buildings vacant throughout our city. Well, you know, we try to finish up this process. So yeah, I don't think that you're right. There should be points given like Mr. Curly also.
Yeah. So.
So Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As we're going along here, maybe and I don't know if there's going to be other sections of this resolution that someone's going to bring up that also might want to eliminate it. Would would I be in order to make a motion? So we can have that removed or would you accept an emotion for that?
Well, we want to, if there might be some other additions, we want to do it all together.
No, but I don't, but that's up to you.
You don't? Okay, I'm glad. Okay, it's up to me because I want to finish this out and hear what everybody else has to say. But I'm glad you brought it up. That's important. Councilman D'Amico.
I think Mr. Curly's just saying we would just do a motion just on that specific piece. If it was yes or no, it wouldn't be, if we said yes, it doesn't pass the whole thing. Just, we're just deciding if that piece should be left in or not.
I understand that, I understood that, councilman. What I was saying was, I want to hear what everybody else has to say. And then we were talking also, I added, do we want to keep the total number of years that a property has continued business in the city of East Point? Or we want to just leave the whole part out, or, you know, I'm trying to find discussion on that. Are we going to make sure the businesses here that, you know, because I remember Jerry Love Club, uh, not Jerry Love Club, but Jerry, uh, was the piano place down there, they closed down, my kids used to go there. And some of you councilmembers have been living here more than me, I don't know if you all have been there before. And other businesses that left the city, they could have still did business as is until this got passed and everybody left. And now the city looks like a ghost town. So I just feel like the people that have stayed here in the city and continued business as is, they should get some points for that. That's all I'm saying, councilman.
Okay.
Mayor, 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 all I, Mayor, all, all I, all I'm trying to do is to, I think it's very clear on this, so.
You just want to cancel it all, councilman, just all together?
No, what, what I want to do is just eliminate that and I don't want to replace it with, I don't want to replace it with anything. It speaks specifically for vacant buildings and all I'm saying is they should not be rewarded points for a vacant building. And, uh, the other one speaks for themselves. If they're, if they're open and they're a thousand feet from a church or a school and five hundred feet from a park and they're, uh, freestanding, then that's, that's the qualification. So I don't think we need to, that's already in our, um, our resolution. So all I want to do is eliminate that, very simple. It doesn't, and I don't want to add anything else to it. I just want to eliminate that, so I'm just asking you, can I make a motion?
Okay, well, let's make the motion and then if you want to amend or add, we'll go piece by piece.
All right, thank you. Uh, I would move that, uh, we've remove, uh, under five B, we eliminate the sentence, sentence reading, a total number of years that a property or site be renovated by the applicant has been vacant.
A second. Motion and second, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Under section four, I would like to remove the sentence, whether the applicant or any of its stakeholders are residents of the city or of Macomb County.
Any conversation on that, council?
Does Mr. Albright agree with, with the gentleman at the hearing of the public? I guess would just be my question.
Mr. Albright?
Um, my thoughts on that, Madam, Madam Mayor, members of council, um, Mr. Guyer, uh, is certainly a fine attorney, but he also represents, uh, entities, I believe, that, uh, are in the medical marijuana business. And so they certainly have an interest in, uh, uh, having very, very, very favorable ordinances, so to speak. Uh, the council's job is to make sure that the ordinances reflect the will of the residents and as long as they are legal. Um, again, they represent the interest of the city of East Point and its, and its residents. Uh, I was, uh, made aware by an email that I received from Mr. Guyer today that, uh, that injunctions were filed, um, by the court in litigation filed involving the city of Detroit and city of Highland Park. I don't know whether those were, uh, permanent injunctions or whether they were, um, uh, preliminary injunctions while the cases wound their way through the, uh, court system. Uh, Ms. Holman also informed me that she believed that the city of Berkeley, uh, was also involved in similar litigation in Oakland County. Um, once I really noticed that, I did look up, uh, using the Oakland County Circuit Court, uh, uh, web search engine explorer that there was a lawsuit filed, uh, by several different plaintiffs against the city of Berkeley. I don't know what the exact, uh, nature of that lawsuit, uh, was, but I know based on, uh, the, uh, website that the case was recently resolved, uh, in April of this year. Um, again, I don't have any further details, uh, but again, uh, this, this ordinance should reflect the, uh, as the legislative body puts it together, and that's the city, uh, council for the city of East Point.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So my biggest, um, reason for this is, I mean, I feel like any one of these, um, businesses they want to open in the city could, you know, go give a quarter percent of ownership to a resident in the city of East Point and then they would be a stakeholder in the business. So, I mean, it's just, it's, it's not definitive enough to what that actually means, so that's why I would remove it.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would not want to see something removed that would help our residents. If they choose to open up a facility like this, I wouldn't want wording removed that would place them at a disadvantage when it comes to where they live at, if they have a business, if they want to have this business in East Point. So, I, I, I would not go against what the wording is because we are supposed to have residents, uh, that, who vote us in, um, uh, as first priority.
I agree.
I, I do, I do agree with you there, but in, in here it says, in the city or of Macomb County. I mean, I know we're in Macomb County and that that's, that's our home county, we just support Macomb County. What if someone one block south of Eight Mile wants to open, that lives one side, I mean, they're closer neighbors to us and someone from Shelby Township. So why would we give them preference Shelby Township person over the person from Harper Woods, for instance?
I mean, so why don't we take, I'm sorry, go ahead, I apologize.
No, that's fine, that's just my opinion. I think that we should really look at trying to get the most qualified applicants. This is a very sensitive business and I don't think, that's just, that's just my opinion.
Well, Madam Mayor, if I may? We, we could strike the Macomb County and just have it as residents of the city of East Point because, um, people who've already been in this business, they would be super qualified to do, uh, this business. Um, I'm just going to put in reference of me, I do smoothies. Uh, going against the big people like Smoothie King and, and, um, the other smoothie company who I, I can't think of their name right now. Yeah, they've been in business for years and they've been doing it for years, but I make a certain product. And, yeah, I can't like go against them head up, but I do have a, a great product. So, uh, we can't say that just because a person is a, uh, a little, um, known person or is someone who hasn't been doing a business, doesn't mean that they can't do the business. Um, and we would be giving the big guys, I think, um, more priority than we would be doing our own residents who may decide that they want to do this. If we, uh, strike it or, like I said, we could take on Macomb County and just keep it as the residents of the city. And that will give them a fair opportunity, which they may not ever get.
Right, I agree. Now, do we have the, do we have, uh, rights in here for the business owners? Because we can strike Macomb County, the applicant or, or any of its stakeholders are residents of the city. Or do we have something about business owners, Mr. Albright?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, what was, what exactly was the question?
We have things in here for the residents of the city, but do we have anything for the business owners? And we can describe that by a business owner that has so many years in the city of East Point gets points. Do we have that in here?
There are other sections, um, for instance, under subsection six, talks about, uh, business operations, um, uh, other established business operations in the city, Macomb County or state of Michigan and any relevant connection. These operations have the medical marijuana facilities, the length of operation of these other businesses' operations. So that scoring criteria comes up for a total of twenty points, so it's referenced in that subsection. Again, that's subsection, subsection six.
Does, um, that's reference to business owners already in the city of East Point, correct?
It's talking about business operations in the city, Macomb County, or the state of Michigan.
That's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is I want to make sure the residents have first rights and the people that have invested in the city for over ten, twenty, whatever, thirty years, like Hans Paine or something, he might want to be a, a medical marijuana owner, who knows? But people who have invested and been at East Point and invested in the city before anyone else have first rights, like our residents, do we have that in here?
Well, it's, it's touched on and like I said, in that subsection six, it would be completely touched on if the words Macomb County or state of Michigan were eliminated, just leaving it then to the city. So that, that subsection would have to be modified.
Okay. Well, can we modify, um, what do you think, um, council modifying? What, I don't think, uh, council, uh, councilwoman Moore said something about the residents of the city and taking out Macomb County. And also section six, taking out Macomb County or the state of Michigan.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Um, that would narrow it down to the, uh, business operations in the city, and I agree with that also. And taking out Macomb County or the state of Michigan.
Councilman DeMonaco?
Uh, I think just a quick thing I was going to say is that each section's like a certain amount of points. So I just foresaw the committee looking at this and say, there was an East Point business and all other things being equal. And then there were some others that had done things in Macomb County or in the state of Michigan. I would think the East Point person would get higher points. And it's just items that they can touch on when they're giving the points. So I, I think like, it's not just going to be like a yes or no. Um, I think generally this is where I was hoping the committee would just have lengthy conversations, I guess, kind of like we are right now, uh, about who to select.
Madam Mayor? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman DeMonaco, but it is, it's either all or nothing. Like, I mean, because I, I, I understand where he's coming from. Like, instead of someone coming from Florida to open a place, I'd rather have another business that's already been established in Michigan. If we're going to do that criteria, if there's not one coming from East Point, you know what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, I love that people are coming to East Point. I've just, I'm just saying that people who have been here all this time, just giving them first rights. I mean, we might get someone that's in Macomb, uh, you know, someone else that's in Macomb or outside of Macomb or Wayne County or Florida, whatever, to have a business here. I'm not saying we're, we're, um, not allowing them to have a business here, we don't want them here, of course we do. But we're just making sure that we take, that we, we take care of those that has been taking care of us. And the residents, uh, invested in the city and the businesses have too. That's all I'm saying. Let's take care of those that has been taking care of us all these years.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, two things, uh, Sarah, would you, uh, read in full what you want to eliminate and then, Madam Mayor, I have a statement.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Curly?
Yeah.
The more you think about it, I kind of want to just, I'd rather just administration deal with this. I think that the whole idea, I mean, I supported your motion to remove that part and I hundred percent support that. Um, I, I'd hate to give preference to anyone over someone else, you know? I go into businesses in the city, I know people in the city. The last thing I want is for someone to turn around and say that I was showing favoritism when it came to adopting these points to someone in the city. So therefore, I'm going to just sit back right now, I'm happy to approve this the way it is because this is what city administration brought forward to us.
I agree with what you said, but you just gave, you just, you just gave first rights to McCoy Cleaning Services because they were in East Point. Now we're trying to do the same thing with these other businesses to do the same thing for them to have first rights. And now you gave McCoy first rights, now you saying you shouldn't do that.
Madam Mayor, I did not give McCoy first rights because they were a resident or their, their business was located in East Point. I gave McCoy first rights because I know they do a quality business.
And they were a business in East Point. That was what was there, Councilman Curly?
Uh, yeah, let me finish, uh, and, uh, Rich, you, I don't know if I need an attorney to see, and, and that was spoke and you said he was an attorney, that he said, uh, section four, six, and seven, uh, favor local people. And so I guess I will pose a question and not a statement, so he can't come back and sue me. What would I do if I had a choice of picking something from Escanaba or Taiwan or East, East Point? Who, who would I, who would I favor? End, end of statement, Madam Mayor. But I appreciate, I, I appreciate Sarah's honesty and, uh, that, um, she explained it very well that to leave it where it is right now, other than, other than what we just voted on when I eliminated that one section. And, uh, but thank you for your, Sarah, for your honesty.
Thank you, every council person for your honesty.
The council, because I told myself from the beginning, I didn't want to get involved in this and then reading it and then I start getting involved in it, but I really don't. I really do trust our administration and setting up this resolution and this guideline. And I think they're going to do a fantastic job interviewing all these people. And I really do have faith that they will pick the best applicants to come to our city.
Want to make a motion, Ms. Moore? You can try it. Mr. Curly tried it.
Mr. Curly, what?
We did a motion earlier.
I did, to eliminate that one section.
Yes, sir, you did.
Well, yeah, okay, well, since we're going to go section by section, um, I'm going to give it a shot. Uh, I would like to make a motion that, um, section, uh, let's see where we at. I would like to make a motion that in section six, we, uh, eliminate Macomb County and the state of Michigan, uh, and only keep in the established business operations in the city. I would like to make that motion and also, uh, number four, I would like to make a motion that we eliminate Macomb County and just leave it as residents of the city.
Support, call the roll.
Councilmember Moore?
Point of order, uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know, I know you meant to say, is there any discussion on the motion and, uh?
No, I didn't.
Well.
Because we already discussed it and you, you want to.
Well, I have something else to say.
Okay, well, go ahead.
Before, before you call the motion.
Well, go ahead.
We, we do, it was already pointed out that, uh, four, seven, and six, uh, you favor, well, four, six, and seven, favor local, local, uh, local people. Eleven in everything except, uh, uh, an area of four and a half square miles, I think is pretty narrow. I, I guess I'd probably agree if it, if you eliminate the state, but eliminating Macomb County, uh, which is all part of us, we're all part of that. I just think the motion is pretty narrow, more narrow, more narrow than I think I would accept. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think, um, what she was saying was, correct me if I'm wrong, um, well, councilwoman Moore, not to, these are just giving extra points to those that live in the city of East Point and have businesses. We're not eliminating people from applying this in, uh, other parts of the colony or outside of the state.
Correct, they would still have to, um, follow all the rules and regulations and they would still have to be qualified. So it was only giving, um, points if you actually was a resident of the city of East Point or if you had a current, uh, business located in the city of East Point.
Oh, okay, all right, I understand now.
Yeah, we wasn't doing, doing that part, Councilman Curly, I know what you were talking about. Okay, anything else, Councilman Curly?
No.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Councilmember Lucido?
No.
Curly?
No.
We tried businesses, support our businesses, but, um, anything else on here? Everybody likes what they see so far, so good?
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty-one dash nineteen-twenty-eight, approving a medical marijuana facilities permit, application, and evaluation point system policy as presented with the one exception of the section we removed earlier in this meeting.
Support. Motion and support, call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
No.
No.
Councilman Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
No.
Okay, moving right along.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor. Point of order, Madam Mayor. Uh, you heard, you heard the old saying, saying, uh, a pause is refreshing?
Yes. No, I haven't heard that, but I get, I get what it means. So you guys wanna take a five, five to ten minute break? What, which one?
Please.
Okay.
And, uh, Madam Mayor, I do have an answer on the traffic signals. If you wanna start with that when you come back from break.
Really? You want, you wanna start with traffic signals when we come back? That is not fun, okay? But yeah, we can do that. Thank you.
Yep.
So five to ten minute break.
When are we do that, Madam Mayor?
So, but, um, if council not back then, I'll, who's ever here? So I wanna say let's start back at nine fifteen. So that's five minutes. That should be good. Any longer than that, Ms., and, um, we will start it back with, uh, Mr. Khan. Mr. Khan, you're not charging us for this, are you?
So I guess going back to the traffic signals, um, thirty-five days is the correct number. So thirty-five days from when we received the email from M.DOT to, uh, approve the third party agreement. I believe that email was sent over on Friday, May seventh. It would have been sent to Ms. Doom. So thirty-five days after that would take it to June eleventh that they need an answer as far as project.
So, Madam Mayor, I would motion to table, um, the discussion for, uh, adoption of resolution number twenty-one dash nineteen twenty-five, M.DOT contract number twenty-one dash five zero five five for improvements along, oh, sorry, wrong one. Sorry.
Okay, I am genius.
I would motion that we table it until our special meeting for the M.DOT contract number twenty-one dash fifty-one thirty-one.
Support.
Motion and support, call the roll, please. Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
He's muted. You're muted, sir.
Councilman Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
You know what day that special meeting is?
We're gonna be discussing it later on in the agenda.
Okay. Thanks.
And next item, item L, approval of special event application, Juneteenth Film Festival, it's a day event, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And this, um, event was brought up by a young lady named Akila Bonner, who was a resident here and she wanted to do something for Juneteenth. And she reached out and I, um, actually sent her to, uh, another department to do this because I can't do everything and it, and she never heard anything back. So I got back with her and, uh, wanted the council to listen to why she would want this and hear what she had to say. So she, uh, was out of town, so she couldn't be here. So I told her to make the video. So, um, Ms. Walton, you ready for, show us that video?
Yes, I will share my screen.
Okay.
Mariah, um, I think when you, when you share, there's like a checkbox for audio that'll come through.
Isn't that running?
The same. I think so. It'd be clearer. I think if, uh, if you had, I think you have to stop sharing potentially. And before you click your screen and then there's like a checkbox, I think like the bottom left or something like that to, uh, share audio also. And then, yeah.
I'll step that over. Hello, councilmembers. First, I would like to thank you all for allowing me to present my Juneteenth event today. Um, before you all, my name is Akila Bonner. I am currently a resident of East Point, Michigan. Um, I've lived in East Point for the past nine years. I'm also a senior at Michigan State University with a major in advertising creative and a minor in public relations. Um, in the future, I hope to open my own event planning business on a community-based scale for equity, inclusion, and diversity. Um, for the Juneteenth event that I'm proposing to you for June the nineteenth of twenty twenty-one, I would love for this event to be an all-day function, um, from one to eight P.M. This would entail food trucks, vendors, um, activities for children, a movie at night, and also an African dance team to come dance, and also a speaker to pretty much explain what Juneteenth is. Um, a lot of people, especially the residents in East Point, we haven't been able to experience a lot of activities or a lot of events that include diversity. Um, so I feel like this event will definitely be beneficial in all the areas of knowing where you've come from, the people who are around you, where they've come from, and celebrating a historical moment for the African-American community as a whole. Um, with this event, I would ask the city of East Point to help as far as with security, um, policing, location with it being at City Hall and also any permits that will be required for food trucks, um, allowing speakers to come, dancers to come as well. For this whole event itinerary will be sent out as soon as possible based on the approval of the food truck vendors, the activities, the speakers, the dancers. Um, I would love to work alongside the arts department at the city of East Point, um, for this event. And again, I would like to thank you all for your time and especially for valuing the black residents of the city of East Point. I believe this event will allow, um, history to be celebrated, but also the uplifting of a community that has been a large part of East Point as well. Um, diversity is very important in any community and allowing that, celebrating it and showing that diversity is welcome is any, so beneficial to any community. So, thank you all.
I'm so proud of her. Well, she's like nineteen years old. So, yeah, so she even, she wants it so bad, she even did a video. So I, I, you know, kudos to her. And, um, I know we usually approve things like that. I think she was thinking about something at City Hall. I think when we did the, the, uh, I think it was the Black History Month, it was something like that we did here. Uh, we did it at City Hall. So I would, I would like to do something like that here again. Um, more with people, uh, diverse people that, you know, to make this happen. And so she will be working with, um, another lady who does the Out of Wild. She was, she's also a resident. It's a young lady named, um, Tanisha, I can't think of her last name, but she's with the Out of Wild, um, you, uh, Film Festival in Out of Wild, Michigan, will be helping her. And I have also, um, different cities and communities wanna help. I think Harper Woods did something for Juneteenth, uh, before COVID. And they actually had a guy that looked exactly, um, like the president, who, uh, you know, freed the slaves and things like that. It was beautiful and I think we could do that here. So I wanted to hear what council has to say, what your ideas are, what's your thoughts?
Madam Mayor, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I did reach out to Ms. Bonner and I spoke and, um, I did send her the information to be at the last Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission meeting. It was on their agenda. I don't know if she, um, just wasn't able to make it, which is understandable because, you know, not everyone's available in the evenings. Um, so yes, um, this is something that, I mean, I think is a good idea. My biggest concern is the fact that it hasn't been, um, reviewed by the departments this application yet. Um, my other concern is the fact that it's the same day as the Gresham Cruise. And I don't know if we'll have enough staff to cover both events. So without having the, um, other departments look over it, my other concern is who's covering the insurance for the event? And what is the estimated cost of that the city would be covering? She mentioned like food trucks and so I think we would have to have like a list of the food trucks. And I think they, I'm not sure exactly how the food trucks work. So that's probably something from Ms. Mrs. Hardcastle, um, of what they would need to do to be, to participate. So, uh, right now, I look at it as I'd rather put this on the June first agenda. Maybe we can get more information and, um, have that within the other departments to have a chance to review this application.
Okay. Council, anything else? Anybody else like to discuss this event?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, um, if I may, what department was gonna or, um, could have looked over it but didn't do it? That you submitted it to?
Ms. Moore, according to this, police, fire, building, and finance have not reviewed the application.
Well, yeah, I, I, I noticed that. I've seen that on there. Um, I just wanted to know, oh.
I was just going to say just one thing. I, it was received May thirteenth and the, they, they posted the agenda at noon on the fourteenth.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Madam, Madam Mayor, the normal, the normal procedure, as we all know, uh, the application does have to go through all of the department heads. And, uh, the police, fire, building, and finance have not had a chance to do that. And, uh, like Sarah says, um, the proposal is for the city to, uh, provide cones and, um, open up our City Hall on Saturday and, uh, have police presence. And I, I guess I would like to get a better idea how much that's gonna cost. Uh, it's gonna cost the city. But the application is in, so if, um, if it's on June nineteenth and it was put on the first, uh, meeting in June, that probably would be enough time for the four departments to study the application and for the council to get an idea what, what this would cost. And then we can make a better decision.
Okay. So we can just look at what the last event was on Saturday when the Arts and Cultural Diversity did an event. I believe, I don't know if that was on a Saturday, um, or not, but we can look that up and see. I think it's, it might not be that much, but this, uh, we trying to do this on a, um, uh, another scale. I would definitely be helping her with this and hopefully council will too. Because I think this would be our first time doing a Juneteenth event here and I think that'd be awesome. And, uh, she is going to school for cultural diversity and that is what the name of our commission is, ACDC. So, uh, thank you, Ms. Bonner, for putting this together. I'm so proud of you for doing this and, um, I can't wait to help you with this event and also the community. So I'm moving right along. To approval of special event application, Level Up East Point is, um, something I put on here. Uh, Ms. Answer, Ms. Answer, of course, from, uh, Pregnancy Aid. We talked about this, worked together on a ten thousand dollar grant and how that looked. Uh, I like, again, I got a couple of things I'm working on for grants that, uh, all mayors, uh, apply for. And, um, takes a lot of work to write a grant, you know, because I have a lot of other things, uh, to do as well. So, um, so I work with, uh, I partner with other people, also with city administration when we have grants and things like that to, to help me. And I help them to, uh, get money for the city. And so, uh, Level Up East Point was one of those, uh, events. And, um, hopefully we can have that somewhere in a park or again, City Hall, because we have it at the park. We have to pay for, to use the bathroom at the, at the school. And so we have it at City Hall. We can have somebody here to open up the doors and, uh, have people use the, use the restroom, um, here. Uh, council, did you have any discussion on this? I know she already spoke. Oh, yeah, um, we don't have a date, so that's why I didn't put a date on here because we still have to be approved for the grant on Friday. And once I'm, we approve for the grant, I'll let all the council know. So then we can move forward with this. And so we were just thinking about City Hall or possibly the park, whichever you guys think would be more, you know, which would be good for us to do that at. So any discussion on that, council? Okay. Moving right along to discussion and possible motion on leased vehicle returns. This was brought up by, uh, Director of our Finance Department, Mr. Blum. Mr. Blum?
Yes, Madam Mayor, counsel. Um, after the, uh, budget meeting, there, uh, uh, there was a motion to, uh, return three vehicles. There, well, the, the motion was actually to return three leased vehicles. Um, what I am requesting is, um, that the motion be changed to reduce the fleet by three vehicles. Uh, the reason being, we have two vans at City Hall, um, that will, uh, they're worth a lot of money on the used car market right now. This is the, uh, most money we're ever gonna get for those vehicles between the chip shortage and lack of used vehicles out there. The market for these particular vehicles are fairly high right now. And, um, we would prefer to sell the two vans and return one leased vehicle. That would reduce the fleet by three. But right now, the motion is to return three leased vehicles. Um, so that's just, that, that's what I'm requesting. You guys can ignore me or you can talk about it or whatever.
I've got one comment if I could first. I, I guess my first comment is, I guess, something I was planning on bringing up at some point. Anytime we sell something, two should come in front of us if it's, uh, significant amount. I think, you know, specifically, it's a five thousand dollar mark that our ordinance says. I know we've sold, uh, cars in the past. I think we sold three Chargers before and that came in front of council. We approved to do that and we sold them on, uh, uh, how come I can't think of the name of the website, whatever. We, we sold them on Craigslist or something. And, um, so I think, uh, like what you're saying, this van, I guess, which I don't know. Uh, so we've got two of them. Didn't we just buy the, the one van? We still have another one then, we're saying? I guess that's.
One, one is a twenty sixteen, one's a twenty seventeen.
And so, wait, so why, so we don't need both, you're saying?
Well, I'm saying if we're gonna reduce three vehicles, that we'd rather reduce the vans, um, instead of the Equinoxes. The, the large van is a Transit three fifty. It's not practical for code enforcement. It was acquired, originally to have something for moving election equipment around on Election Day, um, in a covered setting. It, it works, but it, it just isn't practical for the rest of the year. DPW can move the election equipment around and, and use tarps and such to protect the equipment instead of the van. Um, the other one is a Transit Connect. It's a five-passenger van, uh, that is used as a City Hall vehicle. And that is the older twenty sixteen model. And it's, it's just, uh, an option instead of returning the, the Equinoxes is, so especially the, the Transit three fifty, the large one. Um, there is a shortage of vehicles out there and there's a lot of people looking for work vans and this, this would fetch top dollar right now.
Well, I guess if no one else is in, I guess personally, I just, I'd like to see the three leased vehicles go. But we could get, if we could get a memo with a little more information, I guess, about this van. I think we addressed that separately, but I still think we've got too many leased vehicles.
Anyone else? Think, uh, Councilwoman Moore had to step away for a minute, but we're just, um, she comes back. I think it might have been an emergency.
Madam Mayor, well, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, while, uh, we're just taking a brief pause, uh, was there a motion to table the approval of special van application for the Juneteenth Film Festival slash day event, June nineteen, twenty twenty-one, to the meeting on June first?
Uh, yeah, we can do, uh, a motion on that. Thank you for saying that. Let's, um, roll back. We come right back, um, and do that motion.
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Kids had the door open and the moth got in here and then it started flying behind me, so. Thank you for killing it.
Uh, council, I'll make a motion on a Juneteenth event.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to, um, table the Juneteenth event until administration has had the opportunity to review it and place it on the June first agenda.
For.
Motion and support, please call the roll. Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Have a question. I'm sorry.
Went back a little bit to make the, uh, motion to approve, uh, to table the Juneteenth event.
Right, right, right. One, one question though, with, with tabling it, um, also mean that, uh, no food vendors would be there because they, they ever, um, they would have short notice?
Councilman.
I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
What is the bill? Who gives that? Um, Ms. Dunne, can you answer that question?
You are, Ms. Hardcastle. Do you ask that, please, one more time?
So the question is, with tabling it until the next, um, So the question is, with tabling it until the next city council meeting, will that give enough time to find vendors? Because I know as a vendor, how far out I booked? And
That, that might be difficult for her. Unfortunately, the application was not complete. You know, with permits and, and the request, and I understand that this is something new for her, but it, it does make it quite tight for her. Try and find out, put that all together very quickly from June first to June nineteenth.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Mayor Owens? Yes. Okay, back to our Finance Director, Randy Blum. Anybody else have any questions? You're seeking a motion tonight, Councilwoman Lucino?
Yeah, so, um, I don't know if Councilman DeMonaco would agree with us. What if we, I'm just trying to like work with everyone because I agree with Councilman DeMonaco. I would like to re- return some of these leased vehicles. What if we sold the large Transit van and returned two leased vehicles? Then we still have the small van because that might come in handy one day anyways, having it at city hall for some reason. I would, I mean, I can make that motion.
Okay, I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
On that. Since the the recommendation from Mr. Blum, which I'm, I'm sure these people at City Hall actually know the usage of these vehicles more than us, correct? I would think. I mean, they actually know which vehicles are being used and which ones are not being utilized and which ones they can dispose of and which ones they should keep. I would go with the recommendation of, of Mr. Blum.
Support. Motion and support to go with the recommendation of the Director of Finance. Call the roll, please.
I'm sorry, was that original motion from Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
No.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Lucino?
No. Moving right along to discussion on the SLAP program.
Point, point of order, ma'am. I would direct the question through you, through Sarah. It's not unusual when a, a motion is turned down, then a new motion is presented on the floor. And I guess I would ask Sarah if she had any intention of doing that.
Um, I, I, I mean, I might as well try it. I mean, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. So, yeah, I would make the motion. Thank you, Mr. Curly. I would make the motion to return two of the, to change our prior motion to returning to two of the leased vehicles and selling the Transit van.
Are you going to say something because you brought it up?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I froze.
No, I'm waiting for support. Councilman Curly brought it back up. So are you going to support it or are you going to be quiet?
I, you give me a chance. Yeah, I've supported. I can't.
Motion and support, let's call the roll.
I can't talk over you.
Hey, well, stop talking then when I'm talking.
Thank you.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yeah.
Mayor Owens?
No.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the SLAP program. Requested by Councilman DeMonaco. Please, Mr. DeMonaco.
So sure, so Madam Mayor, oh, sorry, what'd you say?
No, I'm giving you the floor, sir.
Okay. I was just putting this on the agenda because we just, I, we did not discuss it during the fee schedule discussion and I figured it deserved a chance to be discussed. So, right now, of course, it's $4 per month to be in the program. And then I think, well, at least frankly, myself, since it was not highlighted and pointed out in the fee schedule, I unknowingly voted yes to increase it to $6 per month and did not realize this till I saw the notice in our water bill, frankly. Um, so I wanted to at least discuss it just so that we're all on the same page, even if $6 is the appropriate amount. But after doing some math, it seems like there's a couple of ways to look at it, I guess. So what Mr. Blum sent out before in his spreadsheet was, of course, that we've done $4 since the start in fiscal year thirteen. And we've got a deficit of $312,000 over the entire life of that, you know, so over the seven years, so forty something thousand dollars per year roughly. If, did the math, if we would have done like $4.90 instead of $4, we would have broke even just to have an idea of what like the correct price was. Now, I think that's frankly a pretty darn good guess at the start of that program. A few of the years, I think, though, kind of spiked fiscal year fifteen's pretty high. We spent 345K when the year before it was 121K. Um, so I just didn't know if council wanted to at least look at these rates. I kind of went forward five years. Now, it depends if we want to set the rate to make up for these past years or not. But like $5, even if we increase our average amount of money we spend on this program, you know, assuming it's the same amount of lines that we need to replace, and I don't know if there's intel that would say otherwise. That $5 per month, we'd be, we'd have excess funds just like over the next five years of like $90,000 if we had the same amount of people in the program. Of course, if we get more people in the program and there's less breaks and things like that, can be all over the place. So that's why I think the, the $4 was a pretty good guess when it came out to $4.90 after seven years, if we would have hit it on the head. Um, so I guess that's basically why I wanted to bring it up. Instead of going from $4 to $6, we could, you know, meet halfway or something, or, you know, I wouldn't mind also just hearing Mr. Blum's thoughts too on this or any other council persons.
I, I can jump in here. One thing I will say is the $312,000 deficit has never been factored into the water sewer rates. If the fees are not raised enough to cover that deficit, somewhere within the water sewer system, it has to be covered. So the, the, you know, we, we would have liked to have increased it to $5 a couple of years ago, but with change of city managers, the fee schedule kind of fell by the wayside. So the $6 is a bit of a catch-up. I would hope within a few years, we do get caught up in that we can look at reducing it back down to somewhere in the $5 range. But that deficit does need to be covered at some point.
Um, may I, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I think I would be, it's, it's a very small amount, so we're talking about a $12 a year difference. So I think I would support keeping it at the $6 in hopes to cover that deficit right now sooner. And if we do end up having another large year, having the money there to make sure to cover all of the expenses.
You mean it's 12 between $6 and $5, you're saying?
Yes, that's what you're, between what you're proposing and what Mr. Blum was proposing.
Okay. Well, yeah, because right now I just, yeah, overall, it's $24 per year more than it was before, sure.
I think a lot of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm all, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. I think a lot of people don't know about the SLAP program and that is why we're in a deficit. So to, I think I just got the SLAP program not too long ago, but saying that we shouldn't rise the price for people because other people don't know about it and they got to pay a higher price to cover other people who don't know about it. I think we need to do something where we're letting people know about a program already at $4 because the people that's in it, just say, for instance, five people in it, it's because the other five people not in it, you're going to hire a price to equal out to the other people who don't even know about it. I think we should at least try to advertise it, let people know about it so that we can cover our costs and not make a higher price for the people who've been in it to cover other people's costs who's, who doesn't even know about it. I think if the, the city and the residents knew about it, we can cover costs by letting them know and advertising about things that would benefit them. I mean, me paying $4 to save me almost $5,000, I think a lot of residents want to know about that and don't. You know, so how are we getting that information out? Is something that's important to me than raising the cost. I think if we're going, I'd rather advertise it and try to get people in or put it on. I, I think, Mr. Blum, I, I don't know if you, you put that information in the back of the, the water bills or any type of advertisement.
We, when, when it first started, we would do periodic inserts in the water bill. Because it was running in a deficit, we actually didn't want more people in the program because that would have required or generated more expenses as we repaired things. Now that it's up to $6 and the flyer went out in the water bills, there's been a lot of interest from people that didn't know about it. But the, the plan or the program, the costs are driven by how many people are in it who have a bad lateral. So the more people get in, if they have bad laterals, it's not going to help the, the deficit. And if more people get in that don't have bad laterals, and yes, that would help, but the majority of laterals in the city are from the forties and fifties and they are all a problem at some point. So now, now that it's up to $6, we would promote it more. And once, you know, once the program's starting to cover the cost.
Okay, now the people who would benefit more, have they been notified about the SLAP program with the forties and fifties, you said?
The, there was a flyer that went out in the water bills that let everybody know. First of all, that the program existed, but also that the rate was going up to $6 a month. And this is a voluntary program. So if someone doesn't want the $6, they can opt out of it. If somebody's not in it and they don't want to pay six bucks, they don't have to join.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor. I'm, I kind of understand where the mayor's coming from, Mr. Blum. Like, maybe we need to, because, you know, new people move in the city all the time and then they don't know about it. Like, maybe at least once a year, we need to make sure we advertise that in one of our water bills. And it doesn't matter which one, just to make sure that anyone that moves in or any turnover that the new homeowners are aware that this program is offered.
Yeah, and we do include it. There's like a, a new homeowner packet that assessing used to hand out and we included it in that. That hasn't been going on for about a year or so. And we actually had run out of information just prior to COVID, so we've never got those packets going again.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Blum. Do you have, do the Water Department have a Facebook page?
Do they have a Facebook page? No.
That would help to let people know about increases or advertise about the SLAP program or did we ever put it on our website, Ms. Dunne? Or also our Facebook page, allowing people to know about the SLAP program and things like that?
Not to date, but you and I are definitely thinking on the same wavelength here. I'm thinking we need to put this on our website.
It is on the website. It's just never been promoted.
Facebook page.
Okay, on Facebook, okay.
All right, I've just made a note.
Okay, sounds good.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, yes, please.
Another way we can advertise it is with the kiosks out in the medium. You know, we're always looking for some kind of content to put on that. I wasn't aware of it for years, but with a neighbor of mine's having to have some sewer work, I found out really quickly about the program. And I, I don't personally mind paying the $6, you know, versus the $4 or $5 because with building costs going up, materials going up and everything going up, it, it, I mean, it, it costs more to do construction. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with it, but we should also put it on the kiosk in the medium.
Okay, makes sense.
Well, if I could, I'll try a motion here.
Okay, sounds good.
A motion, we modify the SLAP program fee to $5 per month instead of $6.
Support. Look at that, Councilman. Call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
No.
Councilmember Curly?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Motion doesn't pass. But we will be doing advertisement on that, more, Ms. Dunne, correct? Okay.
Actually, Mayor, if I could make one point on that.
Yeah.
If you do the math from Mr. Blum's spreadsheet and divide by like $48, you can get the amount of people that were in the program and we've basically been flat for five years. Actually, the last two years went slightly down, which was kind of surprising. So we certainly should advertise, I guess, is where I was going with that.
Yeah, let's see where that goes. I think people, when they know the difference of what they're saving, I think people don't know what it's about. So don't know, you know, you don't do anything about it. So let's, let's work on that. Discussion and possible approval of vacant board and commission member position. I put this on here because we have a lot of vacant spots. I believe, Ms. Walton, I think when you gave me the paperwork, you helped me out with that and let me know how many positions were missing. Was that what you were doing as far as?
Yes, they were specific to the mayor's appointment. So you put forth and then the approval is from the rest of council. So I sent you the list of those. I did not add this to the agenda.
Okay. Let me send it to council. I sent it to Mayor Proton just now.
Madam Mayor, I think we got the list.
Oh, yeah, do you have the list? Okay.
I think we received the list.
I think Ms. Dunne sent it, right, Ms. Dunne?
I believe Ms. Dunne did forward it to us, but I can still motion tabling this till our next meeting, so the names are in the agenda. So if any, so the public is aware of who you're recommending for these boards and commissions. Yeah, that's all.
Okay. That sounds good.
They have a name so they can be in the next agenda by Friday for the boards and commissions that are mayor appointments.
Okay. So you guys, look out for your names. You'd be surprised. So we need a
I'll support table in that.
Okay, thank you. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item is discussion on making all appointments done by city council by Councilwoman Lucino. Councilwoman, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I put this on the agenda because there was some boards and commissions that hadn't been filled in a long time. And I just wanted to make sure we could get them filled, but it looks like we're kind of moving in the right direction now. So I'm, I'm completely fine with just removing this item from the agenda.
Now, um, yeah, we have a lot that's been, but even with the ones that, if you guys, I don't know if council was able to call any of these people to see if they were still interested, but some of these are very current. And some of these people have also been trying to get on the board for a long time, and so that's why I chose them due to the fact that they wasn't chosen and it's, you know, and giving them a, a chance pretty much, so. All right, moving right along. Excuse me, guys. Okay, we have, I thought we were done. I know Councilwoman Lucino wanted to add the sale.
Yes, so Ms. Holman reached out this week and asked if we would add the sale of 1622, to accept the offer on 16279 Samara. So I added that to the agenda tonight. I don't know if Ms. Holman has anything she'd like to address before we move forward with making a motion.
Ms. Holman?
Good evening. This actually, this property was listed Friday. The first indication was that the market, actually, the price was too high due to the size and, and things like that, but by Monday morning, there were two offers and the first offer being at 125, but it included a $5,000 appraisal guarantee. There was a second offer at 139 with a 3% seller's concession. Um, the concern is that the house Um, the concern is that the house is not going to appraise for the one-thirty-eight thousand plus, um, which would require that the, uh, the process start over again. Um, again, the good news is these are first name home buyers, FHA approved. Um, but it is recommended that the, that the offer that will, um, be, uh, will pass the appraisal is the one-twenty-five with the five thousand dollar appraisal guarantee. This house has a small bedroom on the first floor, um, it's, it's a bungalow with a small space upstairs, and then the second, the second room on the first floor, in addition to the living and kitchen space, actually has the stairs, the only access upstairs, so it's not considered a bedroom. Um, so, um, we're recommending the, um, the council would accept the purchase price, uh, the offer at one-twenty-five with the appraisal guarantee. Thank you.
Awesome.
So, a quick question, I guess, Mayor. How do we, um, how do we know that, or like this, this five thousand dollar appraisal guarantee, I guess, is this a standard thing that people would include, um, in their offer? Like, do, do we know if the other people, I guess, would do the same thing? I guess that's also part of my question.
It, it seems like that is actually becoming standard because the prices are so high. Um, although, um, it does seem that there are issues with the appraisals coming in as high. Um, literally, two different city staff told me they had friends who bid on properties in the two-hundred range and, you know, ended up adding literally almost a hundred thousand dollars just to get the house. Um, I'm not sure how that ends up, uh, when the appraisal doesn't come through. Um, one-thirty-nine does seem very high. I mean, we, we could check with the realtor, but again, this house does not have the garage, um, and it only really has the two, the two bedrooms, one bath. Um, so it, w- we are very concerned, um, uh, that it's not going to appraise that high.
I thought the, or the two numbers, I thought I see one-thirty-four-eight for the first and then one-twenty-five. Those are the two numbers we're talking about, aren't we?
It is, yes, it's one-twenty-five. Um, and actually, where's the other one? Ended up, I believe, being like one-thirty, yeah, it is one-thirty-four-eight with the seller's con- uh, concession. They're asking for a three percent seller's concession.
Okay. So basically, we, to apples to apples, we'd have to subtract three percent also. Because the other offer doesn't have, or wait, I'm right thinking backwards here. But.
The other offer is, is, has the, um, five thousand dollar appraisal guarantee that this one doesn't, that the higher offer does not have.
Sure, I guess, how, how do we know they just wouldn't do the same thing, I guess, the first, uh, offer?
Um, we could ask the realtor, but I think that, again, um, we're looking at an appraisal right around, right around one-twenty would be a good appraisal, um, so that's, that's quite a difference. Um, we could ask if they're willing to, to do that difference. Um, it is FHA, so I'm not sure, um, that they, that they have that, but we can, we could ask.
Yeah.
Um.
What if they came in at one-ten then? What about the second offer even?
If he comes in at one-ten, then we would get one-fifteen.
And then the first offer, we'd get one-ten minus three percent.
Thank you, Randy, yes. The math guy.
Yeah, so their offer is going to be appraisal minus three percent on the first one, where the, the second one is appraisal plus five thousand. If it's less than twenty-five or one-twenty-five.
What does everyone else think?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with taking the second offer with the five thousand, because I, I do believe that it probably will not appraise for one-thirty-eight or one-thirty-five. And we're already taking a three percent concession, so it's really only going to be the difference of about fifty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, if it sold for that much, I guess, right, or if it appraised for that much.
Right, if it actually appraised for that much. So if it appraised for one-twenty-five, and then we took the three percent, we would actually be getting less than this offer. So.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion. If, does anyone else have anything for, Madam Mayor?
No, ma'am, go right ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
Getting tired. Um, I'll motion to accept the purchase agreement for the property located at one-six-two-seven-nine Samara in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand and authorize the city manager to execute all documents necessary for the sale of the property, included but not limited to the offer to purchase and the seller's closing documents.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMantico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item, item S, um, discussion brought up by, uh, Ms. Councilwoman DeMantico, you have the floor, Councilman.
Uh, sure, um, yeah, just a special meeting, uh, thought would be useful for our, for a nine-mile discussion. Um, McKenna had shared results at, uh, two planning commission meetings ago about their survey results from the six-hundred-plus folks that responded, um, and I had forwarded that at some point to everyone else, um. So I figured there's a lot of different things we might be interested in, especially like today where we discussed the streetlights. Um, figured it made sense to maybe just discuss it all as opposed to just piecemeal. Um, and then, uh, we were also discussing, Councilwoman Lucido and I, about adding a discussion also for a social district, uh, like we've talked about before. Um, which is the new thing that was signed into law recently where you can have an area dedicated, um, to socialize essentially, but it can also, uh, carry alcoholic beverages in that designated area. Um, you know, it's typically in a downtown area or something like that. Um, but to discuss ideas regarding that potentially would be the two items for the, the special meeting. Uh, so I guess if we were proposing, uh, what was that end date? He said June what for, Mr. Kern said, um.
He said June seventh, so I would propose doing it no later than June third to give the city enough time because the weekend's in there too.
Yeah. Okay. If, uh, that get, that's, uh, two weeks from Thursday, if we set it for June third, uh, that's a Thursday.
But there is planning commission meeting that night, so we'd have to do it before the planning commission meeting.
What about June second? What's going on June second? Um, because I know uh, Councilwoman Moore, she works a little late, and so do I. And I have an event on the third. What about June second, anybody?
Works for me.
Works for me.
Okay. What time did you all want?
Uh, whatever time it would be.
It would be a little for me.
What time? Six o'clock? Six o'clock?
Councilwoman Moore, six o'clock? What time you?
Right. What day was that?
June second.
Yeah. June second? Yes, six o'clock is great. Six o'clock.
Six o'clock would work, yeah. Six o'clock is good.
Sounds good, you all. I'm just putting it in my phone.
Yeah.
That would be better.
I'll write it down on a piece of paper.
The old school, I do the same thing in phone, I gotta remember. Okay. Anything else that we don't, we discussed, is already, we already done? Thank God. Okay, let's go to pay wrong bills, you all.
Well, if I.
I'm sorry, we gotta do, um.
Make like a motion, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to the bathroom, I'm sorry.
We're, we're almost there.
Councilwoman Curly, make me rush.
I'll just motion that we have a special meeting on June second at six P M. To discuss, uh, the Nine Mile project over the next few years and a potential social district. And I'd like, uh, that we have AEW and McKenna and our DPW there to discuss, uh, tho- those items.
And the street lighting.
Uh, right, and yeah, the street lighting would be part of the Nine Mile discussion.
That sounds good. Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMantico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Okay, next item, pay wrong bills, everyone.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of one million, six-hundred-seventy-one thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second.
Motion and second, please follow the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMantico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Okay, next is the hearing of the public. Our second party hearing of the public is now open.
Uh, Ms. Mary Hall Rayford would like to speak first.
Good evening, Ms. Rayford. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sitting here listening tonight. I have three thoughts that I need to share with you. First of all, diversity includes all ethnicities. It's not just a black-white thing. It includes male, female. It includes members of the LGBT community. It includes members of all faiths and preferences. The other thing I wanted to say is that regarding respect, in order to get respect, we have to give it. And then if we want people to be respectful, we have to be a model of what it is we want to see others do. The other thing is probably not so kind, uh, though it's not nasty or aggressive or bullying. Professionalism tonight was severely lacking. And what it did was simply expand the time without consideration of the audience. So I would ask that you please be more considerate of the audience and do socializing on time other than council meeting time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rayford. Anyone else?
Yes, uh, Mayor William Transit would like to speak next.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. My name's William Transit, uh, from Detroit Furnace and Nine Mile. I have a couple of questions about the SLAT program. Um, the first question is, why is it that the city uses a contractor for their plumbing work that is not an East Point contractor? And the second question is, um, how is it that the contractor that does your sewer repairs, uh, does not have a plumbing contractor's license? Um, I know there's debate with people saying that you don't need a plumbing contractor's license, but if you look at your own city's permit forms, it requires any sewer connections to be done by a master plumber, and the company that you guys use for the SLAT program has no master plumber on their staff. And that is all backed up by the forms on the licensing and regulatory affairs, the state of Michigan, your own permits on your own website, and as well as, you know, all of the documents for the B C C and the Building Code Commission. So, if you could help me understand that, I would, I would love that.
Thank you, sir. Writing all this down. Anyone else, Ms. Walton?
Uh, Ms. Gladney would not like to speak next?
Good evening, Ms. Gladney.
Good evening, Mayor Owens. How are you guys doing today?
We're good. Good to hear your voice.
Good. I just have some concerns, and William, you just brought up another concern for me. Um, but I just want to say this because I know we only have three minutes. The SLAT program has been around for a while. And, um, the question was asked, you know, do the, do the residents benefit from that program? Yes and no, I believe. We are being taxed like crazy with this water bill in this SLAT. And are we really benefiting from it? I have had plenty of problems, I still do. But when you guys, recently, I have water backing up in my basement like crazy. That is on me to hire somebody to come out and check that versus what the city does. And so with me paying that money, which I have been paying for years, because it's been here for years, because I've been in the city of East Point for about twelve years. I don't know, really. And so it would take the residents to really, really speak about that who's still in that program. The second thing I want to say is, Sarah, I heard you speak. I have been, I have applied for many boards since two thousand and sixteen. Here it is, two thousand and twenty-one. I sit on one board with the city of East Point, the beautification board. Sometimes y'all make me believe that y'all either playing dirty politics or you're playing really bad favoritism. I heard each and every one of you speak, and what I hear is favoritism. Now, when you make decisions, please keep in mind that you all are included in the city of East Point. We are the city of East Point and the resident of Macomb County. So when you make these decisions, please include yourself in these decisions, because please don't act as if you are you, this doesn't apply to you all, because it does, unless you don't live in the city of East Point for real. You may have property here, but you don't actually live in the city of East Point. And so please take that into consideration when you guys are going forth making decisions. The other part, Sarah, that you mentioned, that you don't want to, you're trying to please everybody instead of just following the facts. Y'all have so many rules. You, you made rules when y'all were selling the, the, um, the houses. You said what we want.
Mayor, she should be addressing you, not like a directly to a council person.
Okay. Um, I'll stop you, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gladney, can you say, uh, just the council in general? Just a, Ms. Gladney?
She was muted by, while Councilmember DeMantico was speaking.
Ms. Gladney, uh, a couple of seconds, but can you address council as a whole?
Yes, the body as a whole, please, please. Can you please keep that in mind when you're making the decisions? As of everything that's going forth and that was being discussed this evening, and there's so much more that I would like to say, but I have to wait because I know my time is very limited.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, yes, Ms. Trace would like to speak next.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Trace.
Um, yes. Um, I would like to address the fact of the new homeowners packet. I was never given one, and I've lived here five years, so I know nothing about the SLAT program. But there's water that sits in front of my house all year round. And I have called the water department, I've called the city, and they keep saying, don't worry about it, it's not on your water bill. There's two adults that live here. I have a hundred and twenty-dollar water bill every month. That's ridiculous. I've never seen such a high water bill. And then to call and say, I have water sitting in front of my house, can somebody come out here? Nobody comes out here. Or it's a city problem, don't worry, it won't be on your water bill. I, I just, I, I don't understand that. And second of all, I would really like these garbage cans addressed. Um, I don't know who I need to call, G F L to come back and get this can, but, uh, code enforcement left me a notice and said, I have holes in my garbage cans, I've got to get rid of them, there's rats. There's not a hole in my garbage can. I took pictures of them the day I got the letter, as well as the letter. Why are they leaving me a letter on my door? So, somebody's not doing their job correctly, because as soon as I get a notice, I check right into it, and I email Ms. Doom. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Trace. Anyone else?
Uh, Mayor, I do not see any additional hands raised, and there's nothing else in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Hearing of the public is now closed. We're going to mayor and council reports, starting with Councilwoman DeMantico.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, first, I hope, uh, all the mothers out there had a great Mother's Day, including you all on city council here.
Thank you.
And also just want to say, now with the CDC changing its guidance, of course, I'm sure everyone is very aware on wearing masks and just general coronavirus, uh, guidelines, that everyone just be kind to each other. Some people are going to be ripping their mask right off if they're vaccinated, uh, like the CDC says they can, but some people might be easing back into it a little bit, you know, just saying, be just nice to your. You know, just saying, be just nice to your family, friends, neighbors, uh, about that. And then also just, uh, on Memorial Day, just, uh, think about, uh, the troops that, uh, paid the ultimate sacrifice, uh, with that coming up. Even if, uh, you're not able to take part in a memorial parade. And, um, that's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Curly?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, so much. Um. We had a great meeting tonight. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of bantering back and forth. Um, but I, I have to be honest with you, uh, of those who are watching tonight. My heart is very heavy. And very sad because of what's happened in Palestine and Israel. Uh, most of the people who are being killed are children. And, uh, I dare say, uh, Mayor, the word prayer, but I will. Uh, however that you reach the holy one, uh, pray for peace, pray for at least a, a, a. Stop sending shells over and killing so many people. And as I said before. There are so many children being killed and who else is more innocent than a child? And it's a tragic thing. I don't have a clue why they're fighting and, but I just pray that it will stop. And that, uh, everybody stops being killed, but particularly the little ones. That's all I'm going to say tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just want to address a few concerns of the citizens. Uh, William. This is the first time I've heard that we are using a licensed plumber, um, to do any plumbing work. There are certain trades that has to be licensed. Plumbing is one of them, especially when you're working on residential. Properties, but plumbing, electrical and H V A C. So I will definitely look into this and find out what is going on with us using a unlicensed or. Whether it has to be a, uh, a master plumber. I will find out the answer to that and. We won't be using anybody. We shouldn't be using anybody who is not a licensed plumber to do anything on homes. Um, also, uh, with the water bill, uh, Trace, uh. I understand my water bill is also a hundred and twenty dollars a month, if not more. So I understand the pain of it. I am also in the SLAT program, but yes, it's, it, I've never had a water bill as high as I had since I moved out here. And, uh, trash cans, I also, if you heard earlier, had an issue with my trash can today. Um, so I think that you should bring up your, um, complaint to City Hall. So if you have two trash cans, they can make sure that one of them is picked up. And the other one is still left at your house because they are helping me to recover my trash cans that was taken today. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lucido, I'm Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just a piggyback off of what Ms. Moore said, um, to Ms. Trace also. You probably could just email, uh, Ms. Doom, give her your address, and I'm sure that they'll make sure that other trash can is picked up. Um. Real quick, I just want to remind everyone that the D I A is doing the in and out this year, and I believe it's going to start sometime in June. So keep your eye out when you're walking around the city to look for these great pieces of art that are going to be distributed. Um, it would be really fun if you guys join the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission's Facebook page to maybe. Send some pictures to them with you, with the artwork, because I really think it's going to be a really nice. Thing for people to get out and explore different parks in the city and find these different pieces. I think it'll be a lot of fun. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, um, I got some good news and I got some good news. So the, the first good news is the Boys and Girls Club will be doing a summer basketball camp here in the city of East Point. They let me know that today. For ages six through fourteen. That will be August second through the sixth. So I'm so happy that we will be using either the high school. Or, um, the alternative school and the Pistons will be sponsoring it. So I'm so happy about that. Um, also, we're trying to get. A local celebrity who's also a basketball player here. I won't say his name to be a part of that as well. Um, I'm just excited about. Uh, so many things that's come to East Point. Um, also, I want to thank, uh, Ms. Bonner. For presenting that video. I think that's the first time I've seen someone present a video, a local resident. That wanted to get something done and if they couldn't come to a meeting, they made a video out of it. So. I thank you for doing that and Ms. Answer for helping me with the grant for East Point Level Up and, uh, so many people that helped me. To, uh, make East Point a better place. Um, also, I want to thank the Michigan Chronicle. They just did a, um. Gave me an award for Women of Excellence of twenty twenty-one, and I was so excited to represent the city of East Point. Uh, diversity, inclusion, and how we're moving right along. And some people, uh, never even heard of East Point or forgot about. East Point period, and I'm, I'm just so happy that the work that is allowing me to do to represent this city. And let people know that we are here and we're not going nowhere. We're a small city with a big heart, and so. I am thankful that you are allowing me and helping me to be the mayor I am today. So with that being said, we just want to close it out.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, can I say one more thing because I forgot to say it during my time?
Yes, ma'am.
I just, um, I just want to let everyone know that I regret to inform everyone that the Memorial Day Parade has been canceled this year. We are hoping to move forward with one next year, but with COVID and everything, the parade committee, we didn't have a lot of, um, interest and participation. Because a lot of the groups that normally would, um, be in the parade are not meeting still because of COVID restrictions. So we will be not having the parade this year, so I just wanted to let everyone know.
Thank you. Please, yeah, so going back, um, and also, uh, get your vaccinations. Uh, a neighbor of mine daughter was feeling sick and she tried to get a vac, uh. A vaccination, had to make some appointments. They gave her a hard time and so, um. It was good that I, I believe they, uh, she had to get it somewhere else from her doctor because she had problems in East Point, so. We, um, are continuously, uh, making improvements that you can just do a walk-in vaccination and sometimes appointments and things like that are, um, very overwhelming. So still working on that. And so, um, again, uh, you guys be safe and out there, and if you have any concerns. Or any opinions or any ideas, please send it to me or council and we start working on those. Um, can I get a motion or a adjournment?
So will.
Port. Motion and support, please call the row. Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Needing a adjourn. You guys have a good night.
Night. Congratulations.
Thank you.